I'd like to call this county council meeting to order. It's January 26, approximately 7:00 PM. I've got a note here from the clerk. We have to watch blocking in the aisles and blocking the doors. And I know you went to a lot of work to make those signs, but the note I have is we cannot have signs displayed during the meeting. So if you would please, please do that. Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, can we have the roll call, please?
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Ken Mann.
Here.
Sat Paul Sidoo.
Here.
Carl Wymer.
Here.
Could you please stand and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Couple announcements. If you have your cellphone with you, please put it on vibrate or turn it off so we don't have any interruptions. If you'll be handing out any paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the clerk for our files. Thank you very much. We just had a committee of the whole meeting, one this afternoon and one just now. The one we had this afternoon was a briefing and discussion on Wacom County Comprehensive Plan Chapter Two land use. We had presentations from all of the jurisdictions throughout Wacom County talking about population growth, land use, land capacity analysis, and their UGAs. We just had a discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Karen Frakes regarding pending litigation Carney and Reed versus Wacom County. And I have something to read into the record regarding that. The county council met in executive session concerning lawsuit Reed and Carney versus Wacom County at all filed in Superior Code for Snohomish County. Cause number 15-2-07285-2 pursuant to Wacom County Code 2.56, the council hereby finds the following: The official or employees was acting in a manner in which the county had an interest. The officials or employees were acting in the discharge of a duty imposed or authorized by law. And the officials or employees did act in good faith. The officers, officials, agents, or employees Tyler Schroeder individually and for the marital community of Tyler Schroeder and Mary Schroeder, Erin Osborne, Amy H. Keenan individually and for the marital community of Amy H. Keenan and Brian Keenan, Lynn Morgan Hill, Erin Page, Kyle Dodd individually and for the marital community of Kyle Dodd and Jane Doe Dodd will be defended and indemnified pursuant to and consistent with the provisions of Wacom County Code Chapter 2.56. I would entertain a motion to approve. Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item was a discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Karen Frakes regarding an appeal of the hearing examiner's decision on APL 2015-005 filed by Jack Swanson for Dale and Don Mar, Mars Black Plush Ranch Incorporated. And I believe Mr. Wymer has a motion?
Yes, I would move that we uphold the hearing examiner on this appeal.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Last item was a discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Karen Frakes regarding potential litigation on the GPT permit process. And we had a discussion on how we would kind of navigate the waters on tonight's hearing. And when we get to that point before starting the hearing, I will be reading a statement and we'll ask our attorney to also advise and give you all the information that she gave us. Okay, the next item is the public hearing. Audience members who signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of our meeting will be called first and are asked to form a line behind the signs on either side of the chambers. If you are unable to sign up before the meeting, you will be given an opportunity to address the council once we've gotten through all the folks listed on the hearing sheets. Each speaker should state his name or her name for the record and will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your comments. When a large group of individuals support the same position on an issue, we encourage the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group. The one thing we'd also ask is we'd ask that everyone here who is testifying, we want to respect their ability to testify. So we ask that there be no outbursts of applause, no outbursts of any negative boos or anything if you don't agree with their position because we want to hear all positions tonight. We've received comments from Lummi Nations and from hundreds of citizens regarding the 2016 comp plan update, particularly in regard to the Cherry Point UGA. After learning of the proposal from the Lummi Nation and as Chair of the council, I had some concerns on how we should structure tonight's hearing on the comprehensive plan, as well as any government meeting with the tribe. I contacted our attorney Karen Frakes and we met to discuss how the council could most successfully navigate these matters without jeopardizing our appearance of fairness as it pertains to the GPT permit process. First, it was Karen's advice that all discussion of the proposed comp plan amendment be on the record. This would allow the council to very easily disclose any ex parte information in the GPT proceeding by basically incorporating the comp plan amendment record into the GPT record and then allowing full opportunity for both sides to respond. Karen felt that it was not advisable to meet with the tribe outside of an open public meeting because it would arguably raise an appearance of fairness issue even if a small group of council members participated in a closed meeting. Second, it was Karen's advice that while we cannot prohibit public comment relevant to the comp plan amendment process, we should not be giving any feedback on this particular issue. Even what one might think is a simple question from the council could be interpreted in a way to show bias or prejudice. Finally, Karen does not believe that we should act on this matter but should defer action until after the GPT process is complete. I think she wanted to add a few things to what I said.
I think that was pretty much my advice.
I think it's got turned on. I think that reflected my advice at this point.
Closer.
Closer. That accurately reflected my advice at this point. I think this is a fluid matter and we're just going to take it as it comes. So at this point, for the purposes of this hearing particularly, I think it's appropriate just to hear from the public. And I can't think of anything else.
Thank you very much. Do you have the sign up sheets? And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. So we'd ask that you would, as you testify, please give your name. And if it's anything complicated, please spell it out so the clerk can get it into the record. We'd appreciate that. Do you have something, Mr.?
Is this a public hearing or the emergency?
Public hearing.
I'm not sure that's clear to the audience.
Okay, the public hearing is on the, this is the initial public hearing on potential revisions to the Wacom County Comprehensive Plan, including urban growth area boundary First three items, first three folks that signed up is Brad Owens, Sandy Lawrence, and Chet Dow. Yeah, come forward to the microphone, Brad.
So excuse me, a question. Are you seeing the public comment then before the public hearing?
After the hearing.
Right. I think we have 99% of the people are here for the public hearing, so we're going to do that first.
Good evening. My name is Brad Owens. I'm president of the Northwest Jobs Alliance and a 50-plus year resident of Wacom County. As you know, the Northwest Washington, or the Northwest Jobs Alliance is a local nonpartisan organization whose growing membership includes business and labor organizations, civic and labor leaders. All in, our membership includes thousands of like-minded individuals from Wacom County and surrounding areas, all of whom rally around our mission to promote the growth of family wage jobs in the context of sound environmental practice. Wacom County is seriously lacking in high-paying family wage jobs with the pending layoffs at Intalco, or excuse me, yeah, Alcoa. This situation is getting worse, not better. The Cherry Point Urban Growth Area socio-economic impacts must be taken into consideration. The study Employment at Cherry Point, October 2014 by the Center of Economic and Business Research at Western Washington University is an incredible and germane piece of research. It illustrates the socio-economic impact Cherry Point Industries bring to our community. The following is in part a summary of key points taken from the study. There are over 7,000 employers in Wacom County. Eleven Cherry Point businesses, which represent less than 1% of the total employers, employ an estimated 2,200 people. Good jobs. The 2,200 jobs at Cherry Point support directly and indirectly an estimated 9,000 jobs in the county. This accounts for approximately 15% of the county's annual wages earned. Big number. Most of the jobs in the Cherry Point industrial area have an employment multiplier greater than three. This means that on average, for every one job created or lost at Cherry Point, another two are supported or lost in the county. The precise multipliers vary by industry type. The refineries have a 5.39 employment multiplier. If you add or lose 50 refinery jobs, the total impact is the addition or loss of 270 jobs in the county. Cherry Point Industrial Area jobs pay an average of $114,000 per year, including benefits, almost three times the average county wage. Over 200 million in taxes each year are paid out by the Cherry Point Industries. BP Phillips and Alcoa, and Talco alone pay more than 14.7 million in just property taxes each year. 5.4% of the total property taxes collected in Wacom County.
30 seconds, please.
The three companies paid for 21% of property taxes collected for the Blaine School District, 15% of the property taxes collected for Ferndale School District, and 11% of the property taxes collected for Wacom County. They also make charitable contributions in excess of $1 million. I personally have worked at BP Phillips 66 in Alcoa many years ago as an electrician. I can tell you that my family and I were very grateful to have had employment where I earned a family wage that included healthcare and a pension at these facilities. Thank you for your time and please support Cherry Point Industry.
My name is Sandy Lawrence. We live on Axton Road. That's Second District, so North County. I'm going to make a couple of points about the coal industry, a couple of points about climate, and talk briefly about some of the underlying science. One of the underlying suppositions of the proposal for the GPT is the idea that there's going to be an ongoing need for coal exported to Asia in particular. And the chief country there was felt to be China. And it turns out that these suppositions are actually now failing. The peak year for coal use in China was 2013. They decreased by about 1 to 2% the next year, and then last year, another 3 to 4%. They understand that they have tremendous environmental problems. They are working on developing renewable energies and unfortunately also nuclear at a rapid pace. And they are not going to be importing as much coal in the future at all as they are now. India likewise has recently given notice that they're planning to try and cut down and eventually eliminate coal importation largely from Australia. They are probably not going to do it as quickly as they say. They're planning to do that in about three to four years. Most experts who look at that feel it will take them probably six to seven. South Korea is then discussed as a potential site that we could export to. South Korea has a population of 50 million compared to China's 1.3 billion. The market for thermal or electric seaborne coal and metallurgical coal is going away. The entire rationale for the GPT is failing because of that. Now, on top of that, we know that there is substantial, real, serious climate change that is happening now and is well documented. We know that we've had a good instrumental record since at least 1880 and that the 2014 was the warmest year on record to that date. Then 2015 eclipsed even that. In fact, October was a unique month last year. The average surface temperature for the planet was not just the warmest October ever, that was the warmest month we have seen in the world since 1880. Now, the science here is very clear and very well supported. You've all seen the figure, no doubt, that 97 to 98% of climate scientists accept that climate change is real, that it's happening, and that it is anthropogenic or human caused. The other 3%, by the way, don't think that climate change is not happening, they just disagree as to the degree to which it is actually human caused. Now, there have also been surveys now of scientists that are not climate scientists, and I would count myself in that particular group.
30 seconds, please.
I'm a physician. I did a lot of work with, as an academic physician, for most of my career, I did a lot of work with infectious disease and worked with 10 different experimental drugs, all of them antibiotics. So I also have an excellent background in science, and I think that the data, which I've been studying intensively for five years, showed definitely that it is taking place. And finally, 95% of professional economists also accept the idea, in this country, that climate change is real and is serious and we have to start doing something about it now. Thank you.
Come on down, Chet. The next three are Kent Murray, Jane Freudenberger, and Ronna Lohr.
Good evening, council. And my name's Chet Dow. I'm a resident of the rural area in Wacom County. And I came down, the comp plan, which is what you're hearing is about, not, anyway, with respect to the facility out on Cherry Point that I'm sure will be mentioned in a number of ways, I would just point out that that proposal is for a shipping terminal. Never mind the commodity, a multi-commodity shipping terminal. And what goes out the door, what goes out the door in a shipping terminal, if our county should be blessed with having the facility built, is to be determined. I mean, the project went forward on a certain commodity, which has already has been pointed out, may, there may be no need for that by the time you could complete construction of it. The real point is, we have a private business in our country willing to put $700 million of investment into Wacom County, and the jobs that would flow just from that, in addition to permanent family wage paying jobs that would happen once the facility were to be complete. So just wanted to add that perspective, that it's a multi-commodity proposal, and the investors, they won't build it if they don't think they could make some kind of a margin on putting it there in the first place. Now, what I really wanted to speak to for a moment was, there was an article in the Herald the other day, in fact, there was a series of them last, last week, I believe, about poverty statistics here in our county. And unfortunately, in Wacom County, we've got an above-average amount of people living below the standard for poverty and below a lot of the averages there. There's 42% of the people are either below the poverty line in our county or struggling to stay above it. That's horrendous, and that's worse than most of the rest of the state, as well as other places.
30 seconds, please.
Anyway, the, one of the agencies that was behind that was the United Way behind the study that underpinned the article. And if you haven't seen that, I would encourage you to go find it. It was titled "Many Wacom households struggle to meet, to make ends meet." And those family wage jobs that could result from the construction of a large project, as well as the good-paying jobs that would follow that, would be, I would suggest, useful for addressing the condition of a lot of our fellow citizens. Thank you for your time and for the work that you do.
Kent?
Good evening, council. And my name is, my name is Kent Murray, and I live in District One. I'm one of the few people who really enjoys going to work every day. How many of you can say?
I can hear you in the mic.
Okay. I'm one of the few people who really enjoys what I do for a living. I enjoy going into work every day. As a matter of fact, I commute 45 miles round trip each day in my all-electric car, which, by the way, runs on coal, to make it to my job. And I am very serious about the fact that I really enjoy the work. I don't want to see it being kiboshed. Many of the projects that I've worked on have been environmental in nature, such as the benzene reduction project down at the Shell Oil Refinery. That provided me two and a half years of solid employment during the recession. These jobs are not easily, they're not easy to come by. I'm very fortunate to be able to be able to work for BP at the time, and I just question the idea of trying to reduce and restrict the industry that we have up in the north. Mr. Sat Paul has been quoted as saying, "No comment towards the development of the Cherry Point industrial area." And he's retorted that, "Well, why don't we bring other industry into the, into the county?" I haven't seen any evidence of other industries coming into the county. So you have to keep that in consideration. You can't make wild promises and not come through. And that's, that's pretty much my point. On another subject, I live on a private three-acre parcel, and I have private well water. I, you know, I'm a good custodian of my, of my land, and I, and I do not abuse the water, and I certainly would, would really appreciate keeping the county off my land. And as a conservative, I will promise you, I will keep out of your bedroom if you keep off my property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jane?
I'm Jane Trudenberger. Is that okay? And as co-president of the League of Women Voters, I'm speaking for the league today. The league supports implementing a comprehensive plan that preserves and protects our unique land and our other natural resources of the area, as well as its scenic, historic, aesthetic, and ecological quality. We support providing for human needs, allowing suitable and necessary activities and reasonable economic activity, while preserving our agricultural areas as an economic base for the future production of food. We support the control of urban sprawl by requiring stringent regulations to prevent scatteration, such regulations to provide for utilities, open space, and aesthetics when considering development. This would include tactics like infilling in our towns and cities and the protection of farmland from the intrusion of incompatible uses. The league also supports the treaty rights of the Lummi Nation. And we do not think permitting a coal terminal at Cherry Point either is compatible with their fishing rights or with a vision of a sustainable future for Wacom County. There is no longer any doubt that climate change is real, and we must seek future economic activity that does not enable the burning of more fossil fuel. We owe it to our children to build on the sustainable practices of our farmers and our fishermen, to work on cleaning up the environmental damage our generation has made already, and to update the comprehensive plan with these goals in mind. Thank you.
The next three are, after Ronna, are Ronald Scott Colson, John Lee, and Gloria Lebowitz.
Hi, my name is Ronna Lurch. I live in Everson. I'm holding an action alert here from the Northwest Jobs Alliance that contains pants-on-fire lies, referring people who care deep, referring to people who care deeply about our community and its natural resources as extremists. Really, other lies. Changing the direction of potential industry on undeveloped Cherry Point land away from heavy industry in no way jeopardizes the existing industries. This is what is known as fear tactics and harms the process. As it is, the industries are doing this job anyway, as indicated by Intalco's decision to downsize based on lower profit projections. I care about jobs. I work with people who care about jobs. Lighter industry can generate high-wage jobs, such as fishing, marina, marine services, and so forth. The Lummi Nation has brought forth sensible, responsible ideas for a way forward in their two documents presented to you as you pursue the comprehensive plan. Listen to and consider these arguments. They have my support. I urge you to support them too. This coming year will be large. It is our moment in time, an unimaginable moment. The earth is in imminent peril. We need a system change. We need community leaders who do not put effort into business as usual and who are not corrupt. You are leaders in this county to begin this process of finding solutions and allowing this great area to show the way towards a brighter, resilient, and sustainable future. It will not be easy, without conflict, and it will not happen overnight. With the help of local right-wing conservatives, the fossil fuel industry thinks we will be passive and allow them anything they want. We must bring environmental law into balance with natural law. You, as our leaders, have an obligation to protect tribal resources, including fisheries. You owe all of us a duty to respect and protect our water, land, and atmosphere. You must listen, as we all must, to the people who know, who have been here for thousands of years and have not destroyed this area. Listen to and hear the people who actually care.
30 seconds, please.
Not the polluters or those whose nest will be feathered by them.
Good evening, lady and gentlemen. My name is Ronald Colson. I'm a fee-only certified financial planner. My corporation is a fee-based investment manager. We've been in business for almost 30 years. Our claim to fame is that we manage fossil-fuel-free investment portfolios. Now, everyone knows that all of this discussion has been precipitated by the GPT coal export facility. We're a little concerned that it would pivot then to export oil as the next thing that we'll want to pump out of here. I want to point out a few facts as to why we divested, so that you can consider this in the master plan. The US exports about 125 million tons of coal annually, and the West Coast coal shipping terminals are at full capacity right now. Wyoming produces 40% of all coal dug in the US, and they face a $638 million decline in revenue to the state of Wyoming over the next three years. Their response was, last March, their legislature authorized issuing up to $1 billion of bonds through the Wyoming Infrastructure Authority to finance the construction of coal terminals in the Pacific Northwest. Now, just recently, on January 11th, one of the nation's largest coal companies, Arch Coal, filed for bankruptcy. It's one of numerous coal companies that have filed for bankruptcy. The company could no longer pay its annual fees of $360 million on a $5 billion debt. In March of 2011, Arch Coal's stock price was $336.87 a share. Today, it closed at $0.53 a share. Electric companies have been switching to natural gas because coal is the dirtiest source of electricity, both in terms of conventional air pollution and the carbon emissions that contribute to climate change. US coal companies were hoping that exporting coal would boost their, their sales, but as we can see, that's not materializing, and now we have pressure after the climate change agreements in Paris for the entire world to begin reducing their consumption of coal. Now, I wanted to look at GPT and
30 seconds, please.
I've heard all these wild claims about all of the jobs that would be created, so I went to Hay Point Coal Terminal, Australia, exports 45 million tons of coal a year. The total number of workers that they hire there, that they employ full-time is 84. Eighty-four. Thirty-two of those pay the equivalent of $35,000 a year. Nineteen, $49,000 a year. Eighteen of those jobs, $63,000 a year. Nine of them, $77,000 a year. And six of them, $98,000. I ask that you do not allow I ask that you do not allow coal export to hitch its wagon to our economic engine in this county. It will be a loser for the county. Thank you.
Is Gloria Lebowitz not here?
No comment.
Let me just call the next three. Brian and Katie Berry, Alice Brown, and Connor Lau.
Good evening. My name is John Lee.
Hi.
Right.
All right. My name is John Lee. I live in Ferndale, Washington. I work at the Phillips 66 refinery. I have been, I've seen firsthand what losing jobs in this community does. My father worked down at GP for years and lost his job when they closed down that plant. And now he works for $9 an hour. And I keep hearing, you know, we all hear about this down in Seattle, Tacoma, oh, $15 an hour. We all need $15 an hour. But you know what? You're right. Everybody deserves a good living wage. But getting rid of possibilities where other people can bring up their families in such an awesome community as I have grown up in and been proud to live in all these years would be a shame to see something like that get away. I am not saying ignore the rights of the Indians. I am not saying anything like that. We need to work together and we need to come to a simple solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian and Katie Berry.
No comment.
Alice Brown. After that's Connor Lau and then Christopher Granis. Speak right into it, please.
I'm Alice Brown. I live in Birch Bay. One of the issues with the coal terminal is the number of trains coming through and the disruption to Birch Bay. There will be nine inbound coal trains and nine outbound coal trains every day, 18, plus the oil trains. These trains will go or arrive coming across the state from Spokane to Pasco to Vancouver and then up to Birch Bay. If you think about 22 trains a day crossing every intersection in every town across the straight, state, we're going to have some real traffic jams. And the tax money that's received or would be received will be needed to build overpasses and underpasses. One overpass can cost $50 million. So I think we need to decide whether this GPT terminal would be of any profit to the members of this state. The few jobs it provides wouldn't return enough in taxes to make it worth building. That's all from me. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Connor Lau. I live on 32nd Street here in Bellingham, and I will keep my statements brief. Sources within the Washington Department of Ecology have said that the total emissions from constructing, running, and shipping coal from the Cherry Point Terminal, including the burning of that coal in power plants in China, would double the total carbon emissions of the state of Washington. In a time where rapid climate change is deteriorating ecosystems and economies all over the world, when nations have gathered in Paris to announce solidarity to choosing to fight climate change, here is a vote taken in Watcom County, our little county, that would have a massive impact for the entire state of Washington and for people all around the world. I urge you, as myself, please do not let a few jobs in our county overrule the enormous effect of climate change that we are now facing. Thank you.
I'm Christopher Granis, 701 Chuckan Drive North. And I'm very happy to see the faces I'm looking at right now. And I appreciate the hard work you all are doing. I know that you care about our environment and good governance, and that's why I'm happy to see you here. I came to Bellingham about the time they began building Arco, the first oil refinery in Watcom County. At that time, the local fisheries was the first or second-largest employer in the county. And they built two refineries with their docks and they built Intelco with its dock. And the herring that used to thrive all the way from Birch Bay to almost Bellingham Bay, the herring died out, with the exception of a little bit around Cherry Point. We know what's going to happen if the coal terminal gets built. It'll be wiped down. One more thing I'd like to say about gratitude, just like I have a great deal of gratitude for you folks for being, doing what you're doing, the hard work you're doing. I have a lot of gratitude for the Lummi Nation because they are putting up such a fight to preserve our beautiful environment. Well, I thought this public hearing was about growth issues in the comprehensive plan. So I'd like to say something about that. I hope that you choose the lowest possible growth forecast. I think you all know that the forecasts provided by the consultant are not valid, valid ones provided by Dr. John McLaughlin and others. And I hope you will pay attention to that and choose an appropriately low-growth forecast. And thanks again for your good work.
Next is Bill Moran, David Kirschner, and Patrick Dukes. Nobody's running up here. It's kind of crowded.
Here comes somebody.
Maybe you could do mine through at a time.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Bill Moran. I'm a 35-year member of the IBW. Live on Smith Road. I just want to urge you to consider what would replace the jobs. It's fine to say that's a balancing act, but somehow there needs to be a plan to actually recruit other businesses, retraining and all of those things before you make a decision that's going to affect literally thousands of workers and their families. Thank you very much.
My name is David Kirschner. I live on Lummi Island, and I represent a number of people out there, or the views of a number of people on Lummi Island who are concerned about the impacts of potential shipping accidents on the coastline of Lummi Island and the rest of Watcom County. And I would like the comprehensive plan updates to consider how that can be minimized. I am for good-paying, lower-carbon jobs for the reasons that have already been discussed. And I believe that those lower-carbon jobs are being created in Watcom County. My family is about to install a photovoltaic system that would be grid-tied to provide power for our home and to generate additional power in the sunnier months for the grid. And I would encourage you to develop comprehensive plan updates that accelerate our transition towards a lower-carbon future here in Watcom County. And the only other thing I'd like to encourage you to think about in terms of the growth projections is the increasing traffic in the county and how expansions of the urban growth boundary are going to further exacerbate that problem. Thank you.
Is Patrick Dukes here? Okay, the next three are Kelly Kendall, Bob Gay, and Jim Dickinson.
Can't believe I'm doing this. I'm no good at it. I'm a citizen of South Side of town, and if there's anything to be said about my character is that I care deeply about this planet.
I'm not a very broad, loud person. How's that? So just to say that I appreciate that you all sit here doing with your lives what you're doing. And I've been following you for 13 years now. So just to be said as far as the growth area, keep everything from spreading out into the countryside and let's put the buildings, get them a little bit taller. It's okay. We can stack people on top of each other. A couple of places come into mind, New York City and so forth. Wonderful place. Have you ever tried to live there? So, thank you. I'm extremely concerned about the coal port terminal being proposed, and I think it's a bad idea. And people are, "I love you for wanting to have your jobs," and I indeed would like to have another one myself. But a job that contributes to the destruction of this planet is not worth the wage. Thank you.
Kelly Kendall?
Oh, Patrick Dukes. D-U-K-E-S.
I'm Kelly Kendall. I have been a Watcom County resident. I have been a Watcom County resident since 1975. I was fortunate to have a good family wage job out at the Phillips 66 refinery. I would just like you to encourage you to preserve the industrial zoning out there. And I've watched us drive other industries that have wanted to move into that industrial zone, Chicago Bridge and Iron, Peter Kewitt, a number of others over the years. But those jobs that we have help to support this county in many ways economically, and I plead with you to keep that industrial zone intact and support those people that support this county. Thanks.
My name is Bob Gay. I'm just fifth-generation Watcom County resident. We've been here a while. I just wanted to say, I started my electrical apprenticeship working for Mills Electric out at the Arco refinery in 1977. In the past 38 years, I've worked well over 20 years there. Always a good job, good wages, family benefits. There's not a lot of those out there. We're not creating anymore. We just, we do need you to consider this. This is how we survive. This is how we pay our taxes. It's just that simple. Thank you.
Jim Dickinson? Next three are, I can't make out the first name, but it looks like it's, last name is Gamble from Blaine, and then Eliza Haynes and Travis Haynes. Aaron Gustafson, Barney Smith, and Mike Bishop. Colby Newbauer, Jim Howard, and Dave Ross. Boy, we're not doing too well, are we? Dean Tuckerman, Larry Hildes, and Karen Wile. Chairman?
I think
Where do we speak?
Right down here at the podium.
Yeah, my name is Barney Smith, Local 191, IBW. I work for Mills Electric, and I just want to say it's a good-paying job. There aren't very many of them out there, and I think that's something that you really truly need to consider, the economic impact that can have on this county. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Go ahead. Absolutely.
Hi. My name is Dean Tuckerman. I live in Bellingham. Members of the council, members of the public, many people here have spoken for, have spoken around the issue of what the Lummi people support. Of course I support them. There's no questioning, all of you should. There's no question that all of you should support, should be against climate change and do whatever is necessary for that to be gotten rid of. Now, the question of jobs, which has been brought up by many people here, it's not a contradiction with that if you do three things. And those three things are make Bellingham and Watcom County the Silicon Valley of alternative energy. It should be where Bellingham is the, you know, makes solar panels, makes the windmills, wind generators, and makes the whole thing. The second thing you should do is make sure the fishing industry is not stopped. And to do that, you have to stop the coal and the oil to do that, because there's a contradiction now between that. And the third thing you should do is something that I don't think you people have talked about, is you should raise the wage in Bellingham to a living wage for everyone so that there isn't a fight between the people who say they want jobs and they have to only work at the dirty industries versus the people who say they want clean Bellingham and clean Watcom County and clean the world. There shouldn't be a fight. And one way to stop that fight is to raise the minimum wage and the living wage, make all jobs high so that people, so that a family job, a job for individuals, is not, is not
Thirty seconds, please.
dependent on dirty oil and coal. And I think that will be the answer. I think if you do that, we don't need the oil and coal. We need the solar, the wind, and other jobs that are clean. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Larry Hildes, I'm a small business owner and a homeowner in this county, right outside the city line. And I, as many folks here, from a labor family. Every year, it seemed like my parents were walking a picket line so they could earn a living wage so we could go to college, et cetera. On the other hand, I'm also from an environmental family. And slogan came out of the environmental movement in the 80s that still applies, there are no jobs on a dead planet. The coal industry is dying. As it goes, it is taking the environment with it. China is not taking imported coal, China is not building more coal-fired power plants because the air is so bad they had to declare a state of emergency. That's not going to change. Arch Coal is not the first, it's not the last, it was a horrible company, they destroyed mountain top after mountain top in Appalachia, they've destroyed much of Montana and Wyoming, they will not be missed. And if you build GPT, it will be an empty terminal with no jobs because the coal industry is dying. The oil industry is not that far behind, and it needs to follow in the path of coal. We go through, I've mentioned this before, we go through the Bakken Shield on the train with some regularity, we try not to fly, and if you go from here to Chicago, you go through the Bakken Shield. And what you see for 30 miles is a pillar of flame coming out of the, out of a stack that you can see from eastern Montana to well past Williston, North Dakota. And it fills the sky with smoke and this ugly red glow. And you see miles of empty barracks that were built for workers who don't have jobs anymore. You see an entire infrastructure in Williston dedicated to Bakken Shield oil jobs that aren't there. The price of oil is way down, it's not coming up anytime soon, demand is going down.
30 seconds, please.
If we stake our economy on industries that are going to destroy the earth and ultimately give us empty terminals, then we are not caring for our, not only the planet, but our own community. We can do better, we need water for people and better things than coal, we need to shut down these terminals, not build them full of rolling bombs that destroy towns. We can do much better than this, and we have to.
Thank you so much for having this hearing, and I would urge you to have a second hearing in a larger space because those of us who are, they put chairs out very nicely for us in the middle of the rotunda, and it's extremely difficult to hear the other folks who are speaking. And part of the idea of a public hearing like this is so that we can all hear each other, not just so that you can hear us. I apologize, yes. I will try to speak a little louder, is that better? My name is Karen Wile, and I am Mr. Hildes's wife and legal assistant. I'm here to speak out and ask that you consider putting a section in the new comprehensive plan against fracking. Fracking is something that has been considered here in Watcom County. I want to speak out so strongly against fracking. We had a case down in the Big Mountain area where the people who were living there told us about the water coming out yellow, and the, and it, that when it came out of their showers, it burned their skin. They could not use the water anymore in their area because of fracking. In California, in the San Joaquin Valley, one of the most productive agricultural areas in the country, 25% of the water has been destroyed by fracking in the last five years, five years alone. The San Joaquin Valley has been one of the most productive agricultural areas in the country for at least the last 50. This is what we're doing to the planet, it's what we're doing to ourselves. We cannot afford to be fracking in Watcom County, and I would really urge you to put a section in there banning fracking for the future in Watcom County. Thank you.
Come on down. The next has come forward is Betty Scott, Marion Bedell, and Hunter Hasai.
Hi, my name's Colby Newbauer. I work for United Rentals, and I cover the area that is Cherry Point. I'm married newly, I have a wife at home and a little dog at home waiting for me. And Cherry Point is the reason that I'm able to sustain my family. Never had a job quite like the one that I have in relation to Cherry Point. I'm not out there all the time, but it does sustain my family, more so than any job that I can think of, and any job that will come from it. So, I mean, I don't have a whole lot to say other than I just want you to consider that, that there's more than a few jobs at stake, there's a lot of families out there that depend on this area for their livelihood. So, thank you for your time.
Come on down. Don't be shy.
I'm Betty Scott of Watcom County, a retired college instructor, parent and grandparent, an activist for healthy environments that support children, and I'd like a comprehensive plan that honors the laws of nature and protects biodiversity for our children. We need wisdom at the core of our planning, and there are real climate challenges, and since I'm a writer, I'll report poetically recent experiences that bring me here tonight. We've seen deregulations and lost savings. We've seen housing foreclosures, minor energy and healthcare reforms. We've seen contamination of food supplies. We've seen corruption inside corporate-owned media and banks. We've seen the blowout of safety valves on the pipes of democracy. We've seen Katrina, and we've seen tsunamis. We've seen rising carbon emissions, glaciers melting, oceans warming. We've seen vital resources decreasing, endangered species increasing. We've seen depletion of northwest herring, sea scooters, salmon, and orcas. We've seen the sludge of remorse and the rattle of bones as time draws the line at Cherry Point and Salish Sea, home of earthbound wisdoms. And in this far west corner of great nations, people with the taste of wild salmon recall waters safe for drinking, clean air, and old growth trees on a planet that pulses to nature's drumbeats, where sun and moon rise over the Pacific Northwest in a community we love. May our county realign over this need, a comprehensive plan that includes biodiversity. And with a motherly rush on time's rail line, may Watcom County save itself from virtual jobs and political malaise to be, to be heroes...
30 seconds, please.
...who restore its forests, its bloodstreams. Cherry Point, the Salish Sea, for our children's clean jobs, their bodies, their home. Thank you. Thank you, County Council, for your long hours and hard work.
Is Marion Bedell here? Okay, come on up, you're Hunter. The next three are Sarah Murphy, John Neber, and Wendy Bartlett.
Firstly, I wanted to thank the council for being here. I actually worked on a lot of your campaigns to elect you, a few of you I can see in front of here, so that was a lot of, that was a lot of fun, and I appreciate now seeing you on, on the council and now listening to what I have to say. My name's Hunter, I am an alumnus of Western Washington University, got my bachelor's in environmental economics, and kind of came to this place after I lived in Tacoma, and I really kind of fell in love with Point Defiance, the park that we have in Tacoma, and I saw kind of Bellingham and Watcom County as a big point defiance, and that's what really drew me here along with Western. I work at Puget Sound Energy now as an energy advisor, I found a, one of the lucky folks that was able to find a job here that pays well. I'm also a skier, a biker, and a hiker. And I guess the main reason that I came to the area is for the recreational opportunities and the forest land that we have here, that really brings me a sense of belonging. It allows me to, you know, get an escape from what is, you know, our day-to-day life. And I think it's really important, and I know that I'm not the only person that appreciates these places. So what I'm asking you today in the comprehensive plan is that you take into account protecting our forest lands and our outdoor recreation places by preventing urban sprawl, so that we don't expand into those, I don't know the exact term for it, but the reserve UGA's, and we just stick to our current urban growth areas. I think really the beauty of Watcom County and Bellingham attracts people here, it's the reason I came here and decided to stay here. I think that it, the beauty of this place and the recreational opportunities contribute to a sense of community within me and foster a sense of responsibility that leads me to want to give back to my community, and I think that's really important. And I think that if you want to promote a good quality of life for folks that live in both the city of Bellingham and our county, that you'll work to prevent, protect those places and prevent urban sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a Sarah Murphy, a John Neber, and a Wendy Bartlett? Come on down.
Hi, Council, I'm Sarah Murphy, I'm a student at Western, and I just wanted to hopefully applaud you for, I would really like to be able, I came to West, I came to Western in Bellingham because of our forests and our natural farmlands and the beautiful landscape that Bellingham, it has, oh, it's just beautiful, Eastern Washington originally, so different. I would love to be able to bring my family back here in 50 years and be able to see very similarly the density that we have, the UGA that we, very similar to what we have now, our resources still here for us to use, the Lummi being respected and their lands being respected, and not to see potential oil spills or coal trains explosion killing our beautiful Bellingham people and destroying land. I would just really like to see Bellingham stay the beautiful town that it is, so thank you. Thanks.
My name is John Neber, I've lived for many years in the lettered streets in Bellingham. In 2007, the numbers of parts per billion of carbon dioxide globally on average in the atmosphere was 385 parts per billion. Currently, it's at 402 parts per billion of carbon dioxide and climbing. 2015 was the hottest year on record since the 1880s when climate records were first recorded. Climate scientists such as James Hansen of NASA and Bill McGibben have stated many times that we need to stop our use of fossil fuels in order for planetary and species and human survival to continue. In fact, we need to work on lowering it below 350 parts per billion of CO2. The 40-year ban on US crude oil exporting was lifted sadly on December 18th by Congress with sadly President Barack Obama's signature. This ban was enacted with congressional approval and President Gerald Ford's approval and signature in 1975 as a means of having it so that the US would have more of an oil reserve, which apparently now the Republicans in Congress feel we don't need to have. This lifting of this ban will increase automatically the transport of US crude oil to ports by rail from what currently is about 1.5 or so per day is my understanding through Watcom County. This will be increased to 23 to 26 train loads, a mile to a mile and a half in length of Bakken, currently Bakken oil through our county. And this will not only have all kinds of effects like blocking intersections where rails cross 23 times to 26 times per day...
30 seconds, please.
...but will also just really dramatically increase the amount of CO2 in the atmosphere globally. And with species extinction now at 3 per hour and climbing, many scientists believe that we are well into the sixth, sixth extinction of all life on the planet. And anyway, I urge all of you to rule against this insane plan. Thank you very much.
Well, Wendy's coming up, could Candace Wilson, Joe Murphy, and Don Hickey please come down and get in line so we can keep the process rolling smoothly? We'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm Wendy Bartlett, Bellingham, Washington, and I live in what's known as a blast zone. I live within a quarter mile of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe tracks overlooking Bellingham Bay and Boulevard Park. Any sort of train derailment involving coal or toxic Bakken crude spillage would not only be catastrophic but disastrous for this area. We cannot afford to be another lackluster Quebec that cost the lives of 47 people and wiped out an entire community. Coal is not the answer, please keep fossil fuel in the ground, and please, please reject this disastrous proposition of GPT. Thank you very much.
Come on down, Candace.
Good evening, greetings, honorable council members of Watcom County. I am Candace Wilson of Lummi Nation. I am an enrolled tribal member of five, over 5,000 members of Lummi Nation. I'm here today to remind you of your duties and your responsibilities as elected officials for Watcom County in the state of Washington in the United States. Today, as a reminder, the US Constitution, Article 6, the Constitution and bylaws of the US which shall be made in pursuance thereof in all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the US shall be, shall be the supreme law of the land. And the judges in every state shall be bound thereby anything in the Constitution or laws of any state to the contrary now withstanding. As you are sworn in as elected officials of Watcom County, you are sworn to uphold in the oath, the constitutional laws of the United States under provision, Article 9, General Provisions, Section 9.500, oath of office and bonds, and oath or affirmation to support the Constitution of the US and states of Washington, and state of Washington and the Charter and ordinances of... and the charter and ordinances of Awatcombe County to perform faithfully, impartially, and honestly the duties of your office. So as a reminder, the Lakshmish people have been here for time immoral, immemorial, and we will be here for perpetuity. We will always be here. We are not going anywhere. This, I'm asking you to uphold the US Constitution and work in relationship with the Lummi Nation Treaty of 1855. I am Candace Wilson, former council member of Lummi Nation of nine years, serving for three years as the vice chairwoman. I am married with children, five children and a grandson. But your service and your oath is important to me as a citizen as all of the citizens that you serve. Heishka siam.
Joe?
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Joe Murphy. I'm a resident of Ferndale and in Awatcombe County for 19 years. I'm an engineer and I currently work for Phillips 66. In my career, I've worked in the timber industry, the pulp and paper industry, and now in the oil industry, oil refining industry. I've also had a hobby, organic farm and garden for several years, so I'm interested in clean air, clean land and clean food. So this is not about jobs versus a dirty environment or a clean environment. We as engineers and professionals in the industries that we work in, we strive very hard to make our industries clean. There's lots of regulations that control what we do and what we admit, and we work very hard. So to say that we are a dirty industry is a real slap in the face to all the professionals that are spending their hours out there every single day making sure that we are, that we're following the laws and we're keeping the environment clean. I'd also like to say a couple things about, you know, the timber industry I was in supplied all these people with home lumber to build homes with and buildings with. The pulp and paper, it provided paper for you to be writing on and doing your business and also doing things that the soft tissue is used for. And currently, the business that I currently work in is what fuels your cars and a lot of these things that you're talking about, solar panels, windmills, all these things take an incredible amount of diesel to produce. So when we talk about, hey, we want to get rid of these industries out of here, think of what you really mean, because otherwise, if you really mean that, then you're going to walk home, you're not going to turn your lights on because 30% of that is from coal and the other part of it's from the hydropower that you don't like either. So it'd be nice to sit down and have a rational discussion about these things instead of making it a jobs versus an environment emotional thing. It doesn't have to be that way. So I really encourage you in regards to the comprehensive plan to make sure that the industries that we have, they're a vital economic engine in our county.
30 seconds, please.
They are, their ability to respond to market changes is preserved. If you start to restrict them down, eventually you've put handcuffs on them to respond to market changes and you'll never get those jobs back. You'll never get that economic engine back. Thank you very much.
Could you please refrain from applause? The council respects everybody's opinion in here and everybody's testimony, and we would just like you to do the same and so that people aren't intimidated to come forward. So, well, Mary Tully, David Camp, and Scott Palmer are the next.
My name is Don Hickey, and I'll have to change it up a little bit from everybody else. I'm from the south side and we're still talking about UGA boundaries, right? So, over on U Street, we're in a thing called a U Street Reserve. And four years ago, I tried to build a house over at my mother-in-law's. We had six acres over there and she's 80 years old. All I did was go into the planning department and ask for to buy one acre. And the first thing we were told is you'll never build over there because that area is messed up. And that was the girl's exact words when we went in there. So, we've been fighting and fighting, went to the hearing examiner, did a few other things. And I tried to fight for rezoning and all that stuff, and they said, wait for the new comp plan to come out. Well, that was three years away at the time. And thank goodness for Barbara Brenner, who actually called me into her office over here and said, you know, Don, don't take on a big fight like this. You've got to keep your mindset on just taking care of your 80-year-old mother-in-law and find a way over there. And because of her help, we did exactly as she said, and I wanted to come back and thank her for that and let her know we found, we finally did make it over there doing the ADU, just like you told us to do. Everything worked out perfect. Grandma needs her help, she gets our help, we're like 20 feet away. So I wanted to thank you especially for everything you've done for us. I didn't get a chance to email you back and tell you that done, but we just got in two months ago. It took us three years going out to the planning department, all the regulations, even though it was a mess, even though they told us we were done a couple of times, even reading the Lake Patton rules, everything said if you're over five acres, you don't have to do stormwater. Well, then they changed it. They said you got something called NPEDS 2. So we had to figure out what all that was. It took us another two months to do that. So it took us another year because we missed the building season, so on and so on. But where I'm going with this, I guess long run besides thanking you is, please don't let anybody else go what we went through. Please get the Bellingham or the U Street Reserve put back in the UGA where it was before. And the main thing was, what my family went through, every night I'd go home saying something about the county, the county, the county, the county, and my kids picked up on it. And my children finally went to school one time and all my dad says is the C-word. So I had explained to the first grade teacher what the C-word was. It was the county. Fight after fight. So, long story short here, I don't want anybody else to go through this, but if we don't get back into the UGA.
30 seconds, please.
Please, please, please put some sidewalks after Wade King to Lake Patton. That road is beautiful, nice and wide the whole way till you get to the Wade King School. After that, from the south, just to the golf course, please get together with the city and build some sidewalks for the kids, the people that ride their bikes to Lake Patton because they're going to get creamed. There is about three, five inches of road along the edge there for people to walk by. I say people with strollers, dogs, the whole works go through there.
Time.
And Barbara, thank you. And if there's anything I can do to like lunch or donate into your charity, please let me know. If you have a favorite charity, let me know. And I will get back together and give you the whole story, what I went through. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mary Tully, David Camp.
Hello. Thank you for representing us and for hosting this process. We are the government. So yay. I'm also a Barbara Brenner fan. Barbara was very helpful to me.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, sorry. Beg your pardon. David Camp.
I live in Bellingham. I've been, lived in the county, blind in Bellingham since, I don't know, for a long time, for 12 years. Anyway, I want to focus you guys on 50 years out, which I think is sort of a, I don't want to get involved in the, there's some, there's some kind of an organized contest going on here and with different colored shirts and stuff, and I don't want to get, be part of that. So I don't think, I think it's probably a natural thing, but I don't think it's productive or necessarily so. So anyway, however, I want to focus you on 50 years out. We're lucky to live in a county that is a large county, that's not very populated, and has an abundance of farmland, very productive, actually not used to its full potential in many spots, forestry land, which grows trees like crazy, and wilderness, not to mention fisheries, okay? We're very lucky because land use decisions that are made now can make sure that we will, going forward, still have sustainable agriculture and forestry and fishery in this county. Because we, 50 years out, I mean, we're looking, I don't want to go apocalyptic here on, or at all really, other than to say sea level could be three feet higher. We're having climate chaos and it's going to continue. And so we need to have local agricultural systems. So locally, we are insulated from potential systemic breakdown. Like I said, I don't want to go all apocalyptic, but it's highly likely. At some point, all complex systems have failure points. They're resilient, but we need something local to make sure that we, so how do we do it? We want jobs for young people in our county, okay? We want to encourage young people to be farmers and to live on the land and to be fishermen and to be sustainable forestry people, you know, loggers and to be processors of fishermen, farmers, so on. That's, so all it's, please put, that's my request.
30 seconds, please.
Please put all your decisions in that frame because it's very important for, in my opinion. I mean, I'm just one guy, but thank you very much.
Is Mary Tully here? Okay. And then next is Scott Palmer, and then Robert Beistrum.
Good evening, Mary Tully. I do not want to see the comprehensive plan encouraging the expansion of coal and oil industry in Awatcombe County. I don't think we should be encouraging additional coal or oil train traffic through our communities given the weaknesses in both the rail line infrastructure and car safety. This past July in Montana, a small community, there was a derailment on a stretch of track that's inspected four times a week, logged four times a week, and the kind of car that derailed was one of the new safer models. So I'm concerned about increased traffic going right through. I think that we should support Lummi Nation's request to prohibit future expansion and exporting coal or oil from Cherry Point. Awatcombe County could use more jobs. I'm thinking why not more tech jobs? I work up at Western Washington University and we've got Microsoft, Amazon, Expedia, all these recruiters coming up from Seattle to recruit computer science grads, and a lot of the grads would like to stay in Bellingham, but the tech scene is a bit smaller up here. There have been new startups inhabiting offices and hiring folks in downtown Bellingham, and I think expansion of that would be great. Folks in Washington State Legislature, I've been saying there's a huge demand for computer scientists. How are we going to graduate more computer scientists? There's a big boom cybersecurity in both industry and in government jobs. There's a great need for that, so it'd be great to house some of those folks in Awatcombe County. Comprehensive plan, I'd like to see incentives and encouragement for small-scale renewable energy projects at residential homes such as micro hydroelectricity generation in backyards, rooftop solar. I'd like to, our farming and drinking water supplies to be of healthy quality and plenty quantity. I'd like to see, I was looking a bit for how the plan addressed homelessness and I saw a few things, but I'd like to see more goals surrounding ending homelessness in Awatcombe County. The Awatcombe County Coalition End Homelessness, they have a strategic plan that seems to be feasible and like to see some support for that in the comp plan. In general, in the wake of possible natural disasters other than oil and coal, I'd like our county to have the ability to be strong and resilient. I'd like our county to be a leader in healthy living, renewable energy, and stewarding clean, beautiful water for its many uses. Thank you.
Scott Palmer?
No comment.
Okay. Robert Beistrum. I don't stand a chance with this one. S. Rune Buener? Mary Kay Robinson? And then Judy Casper? And then Michael Plummer?
Good evening. Last October, I testified about the numbers of housing units that were planned by the city of Bellingham in the Dewey Valley Annexation. The city claimed that there could be anywhere from 187 to 387 units in that area. By the way, my name is Mary Kay Robinson for the record. I'm a president of the Awatcombe County Association of Realtors. As part of the public record that was submitted in the spring of 2015, an analysis was done by a local engineering firm evaluating the extent of wetlands and associated buffers together with expected infrastructure needs, and the net result of those two DNR sites yielded just seven acres of net usable area for homes, landscaping, driveways, et cetera. With URMX zoning of six to 12 units, the maximum housing units that could go on that parcel would be between 42 to 84 units. Clearly, there is a big discrepancy, so much so that I got a call from the city planning staff to come and meet with them to review the information. I did meet with them and to my surprise, was told that new information was discovered that indeed the number of housing units would be roughly what I had said, which was 42 to 84. The meeting was short and everybody's very nice. At the next city council meeting, the staff revised the number downward, mind you, that was roughly a 75% reduction in the number of housing units that could be built in that area. This is the very first case of the methodology that's being used by the city for planned housing units and resulted in wildly inaccurate numbers. The city uses a mathematical formula, appears, to calculate land capacity. When looking at the gross amount of land available for building in Bellingham, it seems that there would be enough. Lopping off a certain percentage for infrastructure, driveways, and buffers to arrive at the land capacity can work when the land is level with few issues. However, there's a reason that the vacant land currently in Bellingham that isn't built on already. There are steep slopes, wetlands, not to mention pipelines, and other environmental issues that make it very expensive to build on that land. And who wants those headaches? If the land capacity analysis in this very first case is that far off, it calls into question the entire land capacity analysis by the city. The only logical conclusion then is that the number of housing units that the city of Bellingham thinks it can accommodate on existing land supply is flawed. To meet the population targets of the comp plan, the city will have to include the two proposed UGA, South Kitec and U Street. I appreciate both the Bellingham Planning Commission and the Awatcombe County Planning Commission and all the hours of work that it took to do those jobs. After careful deliberation, both planning commissions voted unanimously to increase the Bellingham UGA.
30 seconds, please.
Adding South Kitec and the U Street properties. The Bellingham City Council, on a very close vote, voted to go against both planning commission's recommendations, mostly I believe because the staff included the existing infrastructure deficiencies and the cost of what it would take to bring those in. I urge the county council to review the reports from both planning commissions and approve the proposed UGA increase for Bellingham. Thank you.
Judy Casper? And then Michael Plummer? And then Sean Carpenter?
My name is Judy Casper. I live in Bellingham, near Lake Awatcombe, and I thank you for the opportunity to address you. My husband and I left the Midwest and retired from medical occupations to Bellingham in 2014, so I'm a relative newcomer. We feel blessed to be within a 60-mile radius of our four grandchildren ages six to 16. We've been enjoying the natural beauty of the Northwest and the opportunity for healthy outdoor activities which it affords. Living in Awatcombe County, I've been impressed by the attention to sustainability I have experienced from renewable energy to water conservation, use of bikes and buses for transportation, recycling, buying local and organically farmed food, restoring salmon habitat, I could go on and on. I lived here through what was the hottest summer and least snowfall on record, and I was really concerned about the death of fish in local rivers due to the effects of climate I've experienced the local and statewide support for clean energy alternatives, and I'm contributing by going solar with panels to be installed later this week. Those are panels made in Bellingham and installed by a Bellingham company. I believe it's essential that we do everything we can to preserve our natural resources, to build a clean energy economy, and pass along a healthy environment to all of our grandchildren. My request is that in developing the comprehensive plan, the council will build on the traditions and quality of life which attracted my husband and me to Bellingham. Please keep the community safe by preventing new fossil fuel export projects with their risks of spills, accidents, or explosions which would damage the ecosystem irreversibly. Instead, I urge you to invest in energy security with, by promoting clean energy jobs which will be around for the next generation and for future generations. Protect our forests, farmland, and protect our drinking water to ensure we have enough clean water available to sustain fish, farms, and people.
Michael Plummer? Sean Carpenter? And Dr. Andronetta Douglas?
My name is Andronetta Douglas. I live here in Bellingham. I formerly lived in Birch Bay. I'm a retired RN. Thank you very much for your time and consideration here, and thank you for everyone who's turned up on both sides of this issue and the other sides as well. Thank you for participating. I am in agreement with people who would like to avoid having the coal and oil port up in Cherry Point, but I think they've covered that pretty well. I, myself, am concerned about the water issues, and thank you very much for trying to preserve water quality in our city by protecting Lake Watcom. I was noticing that in cities down in California, they are actually very proactively supporting rainwater harvesting and gray water collection systems. And I think, given the projections of drought for our area, that would be very important. That's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sean Carpenter, 6224 Olson Road, Ferndale. And actually, I thought that list was just to say I was here. So this is kind of different.
Okay.
Anyway, with all due respect to the folks up here, thank you very much. All the folks out there, thanks for coming. This is great passion and conversation we're having. Mr. Sidhu, you were an instructor at Bellingham Technical College for the processing, as well as the oil refinery industries, which support a lot of the education programs in all of the colleges and campuses here in town, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I came here with a bicycle and a duffel bag from Covington area. I went to the food bank, et cetera. Then, all of a sudden, I did what the bank robbers did. I went where the money was. The money was in the industries that this county and these other corporations support out here. All those folks that I work with, to include the companies, they do a fantastic job taking care of a, what somebody quoted as a dirty industry. They do a fantastic, fantastic job of keeping that place clean. Every single one of the people that I work with in all four refineries up here. So when Joe Murphy spoke earlier, I think he hit it on the head. If the folks who are opposed to all this stuff that's there, that dirty energy or what have you, actually get more involved. Find out what's going on. Clean up your world and your area around where you're at. What are you doing to pick up that stray piece of paper? These train tracks and the train rails have been going through this town since the town was created, okay? With respect to the Lummi tribe and their care for the environment and growth, they just grew further with another whole casino wing, okay? They're part of the growth problem as well, that some folks have spoke with. I'm only allowed one hook and one pole when I fish on that river. When the net goes from one edge of the river to the other edge of the river and no fish get upstream, that's also part of the growth problem as well. And as far as taking care of our local economy and our fishing stuff, I think that goes a little over the edge, okay? So all of us need to look at what we are doing individually to come up with a plan to work together. You guys are great. I mean, this is your Tuesday evening, you know? I moved here with nothing. I now have twins, a mortgage, you know? Wonderful work for the hospital. So, I mean, realistically, the jobs are out there, the opportunities are out there, you gotta go get them. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm John Soyn, 80-year resident of Watcom County in Bellingham, and been in the retail shoe business for a family for 50 years. And for the last 30-some years, been also in real estate, vice president of government affairs for Washington Realtors, and also retired Navy captain, was a project manager of the Navy base in Everett. Today, I'd like to address a couple items. One was, if you noticed the front page of the Bellingham Herald here about a week or so ago, it mentioned the concern for jobs, et cetera, for the help of housing costs for many of our residents. I deal with that every day, with buyers and sellers that are having trouble making payments or actually trying to buy a house in Watcom County. Our decision tonight will help or increase or decrease the problem for my five kids, my 15 grandkids and 14 grandkids, great-grandkids, that are wanting to live in Watcom County. I've got one daughter that graduated from Western. They retired at 35, unfortunately, with a Microsoft background. We can't bring those type of jobs all the time to Watcom County. We need family wage jobs to support yours and my lifestyle that we have grown accustomed to. We can't live without it, and the Realtors have felt for years that there's three elements of that. It's jobs, homes, and community. We can't have one without the other. The jobs create the community, the homes create the community, people that live in here, and that's what happens along the way. A recent red book, and I don't know if you folks have that, this is called the 2016 Competitive Red Book, put out by the state of Washington. And this tells a little about everything that you'd ever want to know economically that happens. We're ranked number two, Washington is, in all states in exports. Want to call to attention that the bulk terminal is a bulk terminal. I spent a lot of time over in the Bakken Range and in Montana and the farmers over there. My family has farms in North Dakota that have been paid for 40 years, not the farm. We had a president of the Montana Farm Growers Association was out here about a year and a half ago, and he told us that if we build this terminal, we will have 35,000 farmers back to work in that area. And Herb Myers, when he spoke here in town here, he's a former director of the CIA...
Thirty seconds, please.
...spoke, he mentioned the fact that we will be the food basket of the world when that happens. At this point, I would like to encourage you to look at jobs, homes, and community, and support jobs, fair, community, family-paying jobs in Watcom County.
Hi. My name is Michelle Smith. I live in the Columbia neighborhood. I have lived, worked, raised a family, supported local businesses, voted. I'm a Democratic voter, paid taxes in Watcom County for 12 years. And I have been fortunate enough to have a living wage job as a result of the diverse economic opportunities that we have in the Cherry Point area. As a part of my job, I travel frequently around the country. I see what communities that have sustainable economies benefit from those, and I've also seen how dismal it can look when you're in a community that does not have a diverse economy. Everyone in our community benefits from a diverse and robust economy. The people who have jobs because of the industries in Cherry Point and other industries throughout Watcom County are our friends, our family, and our neighbors. They earn living wages, and they live local, they buy local, they donate local, and they vote local. The industries in Cherry Point and businesses exist because of those... That exist because of those industries are a significant component of our county tax base. They help fund schools, roads, public safety, public transportation, parks and recreational areas, and wage-earning public officials. If you live in Watcom County, you benefit from the industries at Cherry Point. From the 2014 employment study that people have referenced earlier tonight, the Cherry Point area supports directly or indirectly 15% of all the wages in the county. $200 million annually are paid in taxes, which, for a point of reference, is roughly comparable to the entire Watcom County annual budget. They also donate over $1 million in charitable contributions every year to the nonprofit organizations that we support. As a point of reference, the average bicycle commuter, fisherman, farmer, and craftsman rely heavily on these very industries for their own direct benefit. Aluminum is necessary for bicycle frames and boat construction. Petroleum is necessary for bike tires, asphalt to pave our bike lanes, and even lycra. Fuel is necessary to propel boats, tractors, delivery trucks, and our public bus system. And taxes are necessary to maintain our roads, our parks, our trails, our recreational areas, and our public transit system. So I urge you to recognize that we cannot be a sustainable community if we don't protect the industrial base that's part of a thriving and diverse economy. Thanks.
Thank you. Was Les Elara Morgan here? June Coover, Bob Cecil, and John McLaughlin?
Thank you. Thank you for spending your Tuesday evening with all of us. I'm sure it's not exactly what we're looking forward to, but... So I'm June Coover, and I'm here today to talk to you a little about my background as an environmental consultant. I've been working up here in the Watcom County area since 1989, primarily for the oil refineries. My background is an environmental engineer, actually environmental auditor as well, and actually petroleum refineries are what I grew up with. My dad was a chemical engineer with, actually, first in his class at University of Colorado Boulder, and was recruited by, back then, Standard Oil of Indiana, became AMCO, became BP. So I grew up with refineries in my background and have been around them my whole life. My personal experience has been, they've been... They've changed a lot. As a little child, I picked my dad up at the refinery, and it really stunk. Today, they're much cleaner, they're much safer, and really, they care about the environment. And I know they protect the environment. They've got great, great, great records. The people there are serious about keeping that environmental protection at a very high level, and it's important to all of us here in this area. So I want to encourage you to remember how important it is to have a diverse economy in this area and to support the economic growth and the refineries. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Cecil? And John McLaughlin? And then Todd Mitchell?
Good evening. I'm Bob Cecil, a retired civil engineer. Currently, or tonight, I'm here representing the Cherry Point Aquatic Reserve Citizens Stewardship Committee. I'm the chair of it at this time, so... It's an organization that works loosely under the Department of Natural Resources to work on the reserve. There's various reserves around the state, and there's citizenship committees for each one, so... We try to balance the environmental aspects, the wildlife, with the industries. We know the industries are there, and so we have reviewed the section of the UGA around Cherry Point. We made comments to the planning commission, some of those which they accepted and have been forwarded to you at this time for the version of the plan that you have. But we did have some others that we'd like further consideration by your group with, so that has been, I believe, emailed, and I'll leave a copy with a clerk here, too, so that you can see those. As we say, we're doing public outreach for people to let them know the reserve is there. And the reserve basically is all the water surrounding the three major industries. Their docks, their piers are cut out of the reserve, and the Department of Natural Resources leases those areas to them, so the reserve is the rest of it, surrounding those. So they need to work, you know, in a compatible way, and there is a plan, and there's an implementation committee that oversees that. In our citizens group, right now, we've done... We're doing projects like intertidal surveys to identify what is living there, and we're doing it over a period of time, hopefully continually doing it to see if there's changes. So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity, and please consider some of the other points that we made previously to the planning commission. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman Brenner and Councilmen. My name is Todd Mitchell. Brief history: I grew up actually working in a coal mine, working in the woods, and also as a commercial salmon fisherman. From that time, I have worked in every refinery in the state. I've worked in all the power plants in the state. I have attended our beautiful university here in Watcom County, and I have worked at multiple farms throughout Watcom County. The urban growth plan has been designed in a way that works for all the industries, all right? As we consolidate our urban cores, we've been able to do that in a way that still protects our farms and protects our industrial areas, all right? This is a partnership, the urban growth areas. They cannot be done without the others, and if we attack in any way our... Any one of those pieces, it is not good for our community, and it's not the vision that has been set forward. The urban growth industrial zones have a large footprint, a large visible presence, not only in when you drive there, but also in the economic base that drives the jobs, drives the taxes throughout this area. That component of Watcom County is extremely important and needs to be protected as we move forward. Someday, the refineries will be gone, but they're going to be gone through other avenues, such as other fuels being found. But until that day happens, we have to continue to protect the citizens of Watcom County by having a sound urban growth plan, and that is what we have today. And I urge you all to consider that as you look at the review of our next 10 years going forward. Thank you very much.
John McLaughlin? Lynn Alman and Bob Johnston?
My name is John McLaughlin. If you count by time, I essentially live at the university. I want to thank you for your patient consideration of public input. As you understand better than most, the comprehensive plan depends strongly on population projections, and so it's imperative to use reliable projections. Last week, I sent each of you a copy of my analysis of projections provided by a Seattle-based consultant and independently by me. With just three minutes, I will not repeat my analysis, except to remind you that the consultant's projections are not valid and must not be used in any way. Consequently, I developed reliable projections using appropriate population forecasting methods. And here, I would like to repeat my offer to help you to understand, to interpret, or to apply those projections. Instead, I like to spend the balance of the time speaking to two other serious comprehensive plan issues. First, the EIS consultant declined to consider impacts of UGA expansion that will be cumulative with climate change, as required by CIPA. In this regard, the EIS represents climate change denial. You should not... You should reject climate change denial as a basis for planning the county's future. Among those impacts is a high probability of extinction of Nuksek Wild Chinook salmon within several decades. Salmon extinction is not a legacy you should allow or plan for. And second, and this is really difficult to say, the EIS provides no consideration to the cultural importance of living resources to contemporary indigenous peoples. Salmon and shellfish have been integral to Koselish culture since time immemorial, and there is no evidence that cultural importance will ever wane. Despite repeated calls, the EIS consultant ignored current and future importance of salmon and shellfish to Lummi and Nuksek peoples and their continuing cultural practices of harvesting, protecting, and restoring those resources, or of impacts of UGA expansion on those resources and associated cultural traditions. The EIS restricts cultural resources to artifacts of prior centuries. The EIS ignores contemporary Lummi and Nuksek culture, fails to consider impacts of those cultures, and thereby reinforces historical oppression of indigenous peoples. In this way, the EIS perpetuates racist suppression of indigenous claims to aquatic resources. Responsible planning must not perpetuate racial injustice, and hence, the EIS and associated components of the comprehensive plan are not acceptable. What the consultants write is their choice. If you accept your work, you will approve of that racial injustice, which a responsible council, I'm sure, would never do. Instead, I suggest...
Thirty seconds, please.
In fact, I implore you to honor the Lummi Nation's proposal to revisions to the comprehensive plan.
Say that again into the microphone, please.
Alman, O-U-L-M-A-N. Okay. I'm going to eat this microphone. Okay, I'm going to eat this microphone. Good evening. My name is Lynn Alman, and I am a Bellingham resident. I am a retired college educator, a mother, and a sculptor. The Pacific Northwest is my home, and I cherish my forward-looking neighbors and all the natural attributes of the area. For many days, I have been asking myself what I most wanted to convey to you, the county council, concerning the comp plan. Our environment is under attack from so many angles, it is difficult to choose just one. Because of this, I'm going to ask the council to consider just one overarching idea. You are elected by us, and you in turn are supposed to protect for us and for the coming generations the shared natural resources upon which all of us depend. As Mary Christina Wood puts forth in her book, Nature's Trust, quote, "A trust framework characterizes natural assets as the public's inherited natural wealth that with decisive justice should pass down through the generations of citizens. It imposes an unwavering fiduciary obligation on government trustees to safeguard the commonwealth." So you might be asking, what does she want? As you proceed in creating the comp plan, I want you to embrace first and foremost the fiduciary responsibility of honoring the public trust to protect the land, water, and natural resources that belong to all of us and to the coming generations. In closing, I want to thank you for your service and for listening to all of us. I also wish to quote a Native American proverb found on my EDF bookmark, quote, "We do not inherit the earth from our ancestors, we borrow it from our children." Thank you.
Well, Bob's coming up. The next folks are Kim Brooke, Chris Johnson, and Karen Brown.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bob Johnston. I live in Bellingham on 14th Street. I'm a father, backpacker, skier, sports fisherman, and retired college professor. I want to thank you for your time and effort on behalf of our community and for your tolerance, patience, endurance, listening to our comments tonight. I've stood up to comment because I care about our community and because I'm concerned about the chances for a healthy, safe, and prosperous future that will pass along to our children, to their children, and to future generations. I want them all to have clean air and water, good jobs, and a prosperous future. I want to comment specifically on one aspect of the comprehensive plan that I think is very important. The Lummi Nation has asked for a moratorium on the development of any new coal and oil export facilities at Cherry Point. I'm asking you to include that in the comprehensive plan. I think the Lummi's have wisdom on their side, wisdom about the right path to follow toward a healthy and prosperous future. Coal and oil have fueled amazing advances over the past couple of centuries, but this has come with a stiff price. Part of the bill is now coming due in the form of what we'll have to do to cope with global climate change. Another part of the cost comes in the form of their impact on local and regional environments. Coal and oil have some very nasty, toxic ingredients, and whatever the industry may say, and despite their best efforts. Experience has shown that their handling, storage, and transport involves a certain predictable amount of spillage into the surrounding environment. Coal has heavy metals: lead, mercury, cadmium, selenium, arsenic. Oil has complex toxic chemicals with difficult names like polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, all of which are highly poisonous to living creatures in the sea, on land, including humans. These substances can enter the soil, the water, the sediments, and can be absorbed by organisms, which if they don't die from the exposure, can concentrate them and pass them along up the food chain. The results can be long-term chronic contamination of the surrounding area. This is the exact opposite of the kind of legacy I think we should be leaving for our children and for generations to come. Fossil fuels will inevitably stop being our principal sources of energy. The real costs are just too high.
Thirty seconds, please.
Other safer, cleaner, more sustainable alternatives will take their place, like wind, solar, and geothermal, and perhaps others. That's the path toward long-term prosperity. That's where we should be investing our resources and building Watcom County's future. Thank you. Two final notes. I'll get a hard copy of this to you in the mail. It's longer by a lot. And I also endorse the notion of no fracking. Please put that in the comprehensive plan also. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Brooke. I actually live in unincorporated Watkin County, which these folks here are my representatives, as I have no others, out in the county. So anyway, what I really wanted to talk about was actually the Growth Management Act and kind of the west part of the county, which hopefully has a plan or does not have a plan. What I've seen over the past 16 years is zoning issues that have created little squares and pockets of people moving into wetlands with infill, people moving into haylands, and the decrease of hayfields and farming communities out on the west part of Watkin County. There's only Birch Bay, which I, I live approximately, I'd say 10 miles from Birch Bay, but I happen to be in their watershed. That's amazing to me. And due to the lack of foresight with the county council planning, you now have a housing community in the middle of a hayfield on Bay Road with no infrastructure, no grocery stores, no bus service, nothing out there. But however, you also have tributaries that also go into Puget Sound, you have tributaries that are, you have Cherry Point. Everything that drains from this area goes to the west end into Puget Sound. Without any foresight is to where that water goes. I would like to stop the rezoning of Watkin County. I want farmlands to stay. If they're 100 acres, they're 100 acres. You know, just because you have land doesn't mean it's buildable, okay? I mean, whoever said that? You know, I have 40 acres next to me, one that was all ag land. Now I have a junkyard, I have another three houses on five acres, you know, it's phenomenal to me. And I live right across from Lake Terrell. The water and the road surface is becoming undrivable. We now have oil tankers driving up North Star Road, we have double tankers, it's a country road. So I'm basically concerned about infrastructure out in the county. If we're going to have county roads or farmland roads, they're farmland roads.
Thirty seconds, please.
I would like to see big trucks and industrial traffic go Grandview, Kickerville, Mountainview. That's it. So, and I'm paying my property taxes for all these things that are not being improved. Thank you.
Next is Chris Johnson, Karen Brown, and Larry Helm.
Hi, my name's Chris Johnson. I'm a lifelong resident of Bellingham. I'd like to thank everybody for showing up today. I like to see the passion, it makes me feel good. I had a big statement all written out, but I left it up in the back because I'm not going to use it. People have stated what I was going to say probably more eloquently than I could. But I just wanted to say that I was glad to hear that you guys have decided to put off making a decision on this language to the comprehensive plan. I think that's a good idea. I don't support the language that was proposed on the industrial zone at Cherry Point. I'm a proud member of Labor's Local 292, and I spent much of my working career at those facilities out there in that industrial zone. You know, 1953 Mobile Refinery was built, you know, it's been an industrial zone since, for 70-plus years. And we need that economic base. You know, I raised two kids, bought a house, put them through college, you know, on a high school education, because I was lucky enough to become a member of a building trades union that has good wages, health care, pension, you know, and there's work for me, you know? And so if you don't have that work, people leave. You lose your tax base, you lose your economy. And, you know, I'm all for, you know, clean environment, I'm all for getting off of fossil fuels, you know? I think we need to do it as soon as we can, you know? But people got to remember, you know, 90% of the things you use in your daily life are petroleum-based, I mean, in one way or another. I mean, our whole economy is so entangled with fossil fuels that you can't just kick a cold turkey, you know? I mean, it's going to take some time. And something else I wanted to say, people were talking about how the coal industry is dying. Well, if you ask most good liberals, what's the best way to kickstart the economy? What's the best way to recreate jobs? Infrastructure spending.
Thirty seconds, please.
There you go. You've got a private company that's willing to spend $750 million on an infrastructure project that will generate about 7 million man-hours of building trades work on a PLA, you know, and you want to kick that to the curb? I don't know.
I understand Karen Brown is yielding her time to Clayton. Go ahead, Clayton.
Thank you.
Then Larry Helm, then Eleanor King, then Mike Colhey.
Thank you. My name's Clayton Petrie. I live in Bellingham, and I'm speaking in favor of your planning commission recommendation and two small UGA expansions, especially the U Street area one. I think that both those planning commissions were much of the same mind that simply dropping the population forecast, planning for more commuting into town and for work, and that housing choice doesn't matter is a recipe for disaster, and I agree. Bellingham currently has a special affordable housing emergency and is asking the state to declare a homeless housing emergency as well. Please refer to the Washington State Department of Commerce 2015 Housing Needs Assessment that I've sent to you as part of this planning process. Watkin County and especially Bellingham are at the bottom of the barrel, literally at the bottom of the list for all of Washington's 39 counties. We're doing something wrong. Watkin County is dead last in the state for both measures of fair market rental affordability. That's for families and for single people. Watkin County trails the state by 20 percentage points for affordable owner-occupied housing, and only one county is worse than Watkin County in the percentage of owner-occupied housing that is affordable. That's terrible. Watkin County's rental vacancy rate is dangerously low, and Bellingham's is even worse. HUD considers less than 5% to be an unhealthy rental market. Watkin County is at less than 2%, and the city of Bellingham is even lower. The land capacity analysis assumes a much more healthy vacancy rate, and that still hasn't been addressed. That's quite a few units, nor is the 2,000 to 4,000 affordable housing units there the Bellingham Consolidated Plan points out that are needed. Just this month, you read in the Herald that the United Way reports that 42% of our citizens earn less than the basic cost of living. Only two counties in Washington score lower than Watkin. Last week, the Opportunity Council reported that finding and keeping a good job and home here is a huge challenge. One-third of us say we have to choose between paying rent or their mortgage or meeting other basic needs. The comp plan process, update process is supposed to be a review of what has happened and a correction of what isn't working, and I'm telling you some of the things that aren't working. Staying the course with some of the worst housing results in the state is not what we should be doing. I'm going to send you a lot more information during this week and next week, but one of the most important things that I hope you find as a takeaway is when it comes to the capital facilities costs that you guys discussed a little bit.
Thirty seconds, please.
I'll send you a link, but the finance director who did these reports told the city, well, a lot of these projects have to be done whether or not the U Street UGA reserve is put back into UGA status. They have to do, spend a lot of this money either way. You heard somebody talking about fixing U Street. I personally believe that's a very dangerous road and should be done no matter what happens. And then the other thing is, we have two unanimous votes, and we have a four-to-three split in the old city council where somebody switched their vote because they thought it was getting too late, much like tonight. So I hope you have lots and lots of time for people to come speak because there's so much to talk about, and I hope some of these pieces of information were helpful. Thank you.
Larry Helm? Do you want to, let her go first?
Sure.
Eleanor?
Yes, Eleanor King from Ferndale. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. Watkin County has been a sacred part of my life for 80 years. We're a diverse people and need a variety of jobs with a variety of skills, located to keep traffic from being congested. We have a community that has benefited from the generosity of our refineries for many, many years. We need the added jobs to provide wages for our families. I support added jobs at Cherry Point with Gateway Pacific Terminal. We cannot all live off from fishing. Thank you.
Larry Helm, I have a small farm out on Squawkamook Lake Road, and I have a business in town. I came here to talk about the comp plan, but I'll be short on that because I've submitted some letters on that, but I really think the city of Bellingham is falling down. They're not accepting the amount of growth they need to accept, and they absolutely need to do the U Street UGA. Another issue that's not been addressed very well is these cities expand, a lot of the expansion is on farmland, and I really think that should be mitigated. And we've talked over the years about transfer development program. I think this is a chance to do that. If Linden is going to gobble up prime farmland that's designated agriculture, then whoever goes to that and builds anything should pay for it. And that would create a fund to start the transfer development rights, and you wouldn't have to take out of the Conservation Futures Fund. I want to talk a little bit about the coal port I support. It's not a coal port. It's a multi-use job for everybody port, and I want to talk a little bit about coal, about something I don't think a lot of people realize. I've been in China, I've been in Beijing, I've been in the shops, and I've looked at the kind of coal those people use. I've had to leave Beijing because I couldn't breathe. It's terrible. The coal they use is substandard, it's full of debris, it's from Indonesia and interior China. Our clean coal would clean up the air coming around the Pacific. And everybody goes, oh, we've got solar, we've got wind, we've got nuclear. Nuclear, ever since Fukushima, Germany shut down nuclear, Japan shut down nuclear. Take a look, Google Fukushima, they're still dumping radiation. I mean, Albert Core fishermen came to the Rome Grange the other day to can, and they were testing their fish for radiation with a ganger counter. I don't think radiation, you know, is something we should have in our North Pacific basin, and I think it's going to be a long time before countries get off coal, so we should look at giving them clean coal. Look at your tax form. Wind and solar is being heavily subsidized by the federal government with borrowed money. And I think you better make jobs for our grandkids because they're the ones that are going to be paying for all this borrowed money, because our piggy bank's about empty. Thank you.
Mike Col, Colhey, then Jeff Tenpass, and Lyle Anderson?
Thank you. Mike Cully. I'd like to thank you for letting me speak today, council, and that was a great speaker before me. Thank you very much for actually speaking of the next generation, because those are the ones we're really here trying to save. I'm extremely fortunate that someone is willing to invest that kind of $750 million in this community. You go across this country, there's a lot of places that would give their right arm for that opportunity. That just doesn't, that just doesn't happen every day. These two counties in the north part of this state, the northwest corner of this state, have an unbelievable opportunity to live and prosper and grow in this wonderful area. People in big cities would pray to die for what we have here. For those of you who don't recognize it, the climate's been changing since the beginning of time. No matter what we do, it's going to keep changing, okay? Don't emphasize on the last year. The snowpack last winter was terrible. A lot of people had to go through that. Skiers were upset. There wasn't enough water in the rivers come the summer, but don't take that as the total. Look what happened this winter. We have more snow this winter right now than we had all of last year. Don't take last summer... Don't take last summer as being a hot summer, as being the, the wave of the future, okay? This has been going on since the beginning of time. Went through an ice age, came out of it. This is gonna keep changing. Don't dwell on the, on this recent twelve, twelve-month history. I'm glad some people have brought up the, the refinery itself. To disregard the, the actual activities at the refinery, the EPA standards that have to be met, we do an amazing job, engineers on down, to keep the refineries as clean as possible. People come from all corners of this earth, all corners of this country to work at these refineries. If you see the faces on some of these people that come out here to the west, northwest Washington and see what we have, and, and look out at the shores, and, and they just can't believe, they, you know what they do? They beg for, for a chance to stay, because this doesn't happen everywhere. This is a beautiful community, and we're not, we're not out there ruining it, we're out there growing it. I live a stone's throw from Meridian High School.
Thirty seconds, please.
I've sent three kids through school, now in college, all debt-free. I've coached baseball, basketball, soccer. I've stood side-by-side with the proud refinery workers who give everything they can to this next generation, and are very proud to do so. By the way, this is, I'm very glad that people mentioned this is a bulk commodity port, which will be able to ship Iowa corn, Kansas wheat, and every other commodity west of the Mississippi. If we don't broaden our horizons
Time.
they will broaden the Panama Canal and go around the other way. Thank you.
Jeff Tenpass and Lyle Anderson, and then Lorraine Newman and Chris Halterman.
Hi, my name is Jeff Tenpass. I'm a partner in BAI Environmental Services of Linden, Washington. We have been in business for over thirty years, providing services to the industries of Cherry Point and others across the Pacific Northwest. I am a transplant into Wacom County for over twenty years now, and my business partners have been lifelong residents. BAI Environmental Services strongly supports the Wacom Business Alliance's recommendations to add language to the Wacom County Comprehensive Plan to protect and enhance the existing industrial base at Cherry Point. BAI Environmental Services employs around fifty full-time employees. These employees represent an additional seventy-five family members, for a total of approximately seven, a hundred and twenty-five people impacted by the health and vitality of Cherry Point Industry. Our small company spends millions of dollars in the local community, from accountants to equipment repair shops, from restaurants to hotels, and from advertising firms to harbor stores and supply companies. As an active member of the community, our company also participates in charitable giving to local homeless shelters, women's homes, local food banks, the local Red Cross and the Boys and Girls Club. The Wacom County Comprehensive Plan recommendations from the Planning Commission, particularly in Chapters Two and Seven relating to heavy industry at Cherry Point, are adequate. Please do not consider inserting any language that would jeopardize the future of Cherry Point Industry and ultimately the whole of Wacom County. Thank you.
My name is Lyle Anderson. I realize it's been a very long day for you guys, so thanks for hanging in there. I'm a member of the Cherry Point Aquatic Reserve Citizen Stewardship Committee, and am a signee to the written comments submitted online by the committee regarding Chapter Two of the Comprehensive Plan. I have been a volunteer in both the intertidal biota surveys at various locations on Wacom County beaches, sponsored by the committee, and marine bird surveys in the Cherry Point area, co-sponsored by the committee and North Cascades Audubon Society. Participating in these projects has made me aware of the incredible diversity of life forms in our local waters, as well as their simultaneous tenacity in surviving in tough environments and their vulnerability to environmental stressors that we have subjected them to. The Revised Code of Washington Title Forty-three, Chapter Forty-three, Point Twenty-One C, State Environmental Policy, Section Forty-three, Point Twenty-One C, Point Zero Three Zero states in part that, quote, "All branches of government of this state shall recognize the worldwide and long-range character of environmental problems and lend appropriate support to resolutions and programs designed to maximize international cooperation in anticipating and preventing a decline in the quality of the world environment." I ask you to consider the effects that more development at the Cherry Point area will have not only on our local environment and the impacts that will have on, as RCW states, the quality of the world environment. Thank you for your time.
Lorraine Newman, then Chris Halterman, then Derek Sturgeon.
Lorraine Newman, Wacom County. If you want to make a sausage, milk a cow, manufacture product, build an apartment to live in, or an assisted living facility for those who need that care, or fillet a fish, you all need one thing, you need a space to do it in. And that's what this Comprehensive Plan is about, giving us all spaces to do what we want to do here, so that we can live here, so that we can work here, so that we can have good jobs here, so that we can take care of all of our children here. It's not just one job versus another job. And what we have seen is we've had twenty years of empty space down in the city with no jobs in it, and I don't think anybody here wants to see another twenty years of empty space with no jobs in it. What we are, what we are seeing is that we aren't going to make up these four hundred and thirty-five jobs lost at Intellco or the hundred and twenty jobs lost at CH Two-Mill with one company coming in here. We're going to have to make these jobs back up with eighty-seven jobs here and twenty jobs there and fifteen jobs here, because that's how the economy is supporting new jobs coming into place now, and we need a place for these people to be. They've talked here about having tech jobs. Microsoft is building a new plant over in Ireland. Two hundred acres is what they needed for their plant. I'd love to have tech jobs up here. The question is, do we have two hundred acres here to put one of those plants on? The second thing they need besides space is a government that actually wants them here. And outside of the marijuana industry, I haven't seen anybody come to this council for a long time and met with smiling faces, and that you've wanted them here. And that word has gotten out into the greater community and the state of Washington and the rest of the country. You guys don't want people here, and that needs to change too, because in order for our children to live here in this beautiful place, they're going to have to have a job. And those jobs are gonna take space and a government that wants to have them here. And I hope that you can change this, and we don't have the next twenty years being what the last twenty have been.
There's a lot of people who I, I have seen come up here and talk to you tonight. I went to school with them, I knew their families, we spent a lot of time here. I wanna thank you guys for providing this opportunity for everybody to come and speak, and I wanna thank all the people who showed up today, because I think it's awesome that they're here and they have an opportunity to talk to you, to communicate to you, and to, I'm not gonna use a lot of emotional trigger words, and I know a lot of people do, I'm only gonna use one, and that is, here we are tonight, the purveyors of paranoia, as some have recently said. Is it paranoid to think that the industries at Cherry Point are at risk? This soon-to-be-finalized Wacom County Comp Plan is the plan for which the residents and businesses of this county should be able to rely on. The letter sent to the Wacom County Planning about inserting a moratorium on supporting or exporting fossil fuels and future growth at Cherry Point is a cause for great concern to thousands of families and hundreds of businesses, when twenty-five percent of the tax base comes from the current industries at Cherry Point and much more when you factor in the hundreds of businesses and people who work in some capacity or derive their economic stability from these industries. I hope and I trust that these things will not be ignored. The Comp Plan Update needs to include Cherry Point Industrial Zoning and Growth, as well as many other items if you are to do your due diligence for the community. The Comp Plan Update must include proper planning for land growth to keep housing affordable, proper planning for resource lands such as farming, manufacturing, mineral extraction, forestry, and industry is an important factor too. Wacom County suffers from a lack of affordable housing, yet we continue to plan for sustainable levels of growth to build in Bellingham, but they don't expand their urban growth areas. Wacom County lost a lot of good payable jobs as CH Two-M Hill closed their doors. Alacoa is downsizing and looks to shut down. Hagan's corporate jobs are in jeopardy, and the recent downsizing of Fakelife here right in downtown Bellingham. As the council is aware, Wacom County has more than four times the amount of parkland than any other county in Washington State. Why wouldn't the people who work here be concerned? The purveyors of paranoia are justified
Thirty seconds, please.
and I ask no, that you, I ask, no, I trust that you look out for those people who are not comfortable coming before you to speak. Beg, ask, or demand that you plan for Wacom County a future that includes them too. Is it Cherry Point Park, Cherry Point Heritage Preserve, or is it gonna be in Cherry Point Industrial Zone? Thank you.
Derek Sturgeon, then Chris Brett, and then Michael Patricet.
I'm Derek Sturgeon. I've been, I was raised here, born here, grew up in Lummy. Those who oppose Cherry Point from Lummy do not speak for all of us. Some of us have bigger dreams than fishing and owning a fireworks stand or working at a casino. A lot of us rely to provide for our families on these refineries and on the growth that is available at Cherry Point. And I hope that you guys make the right decision in keeping jobs here and not sending them down the road to somebody else. Thanks.
Chris, Chris Brett, and Michael Patricet, and then Trevor Smith.
Michael Petrisch, Thirteen Twenty-Eight Street, Anacortes, Washington. A lot of people probably wondering why is this person from Anacortes here? I'm a union carpenter. I'm out of Local Seventy out of Mount Vernon, Washington. I'm a trustee to that local. I'm a rank-and-file carpenter, works in the field. I represent fifteen hundred members from that local, of about three hundred of, are out of Wacom County. I'm also an elected delegate from my local to the Pacific Northwest Regional Council of Carpenters that represents Alaska, Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, and Wyoming. I come to you tonight to speak on behalf of my fellow carpenters and scaffold builders that spend a lot of time in these refineries out here, that will build this facility here in Wacom County. They will man it, they will build it, they'll build it right, and they'll build it safely. I talk about safety because every day, those of us who work out in these refineries, our life is in jeopardy every day because they boil oil twenty-four-seven. But we take our responsibilities very seriously when we're there. In the old construction industry, when they built the project, death was part of the planning process. We're gonna kill seven people on this project, we can deal with that. Well, as a, as a carpenter and as a laborer, and I know there's other people on this audience tonight, there are ironworkers, there are electricians, there are pipe fitters, there are laborers, there are welders, there are truck drivers, cement masons, these are the people that are gonna build this facility. It matters to them what you do here. I have a great respect and admiration for the tribes, for the Lummies. I was born in Anacortes, born and raised. I was a fisherman growing up, my whole fish, my whole family were all fishermen, all, I'm an immigrant, I'm a child of an immigrant. My family were all immigrants, and they were, grew up as fishermen. We worked hand-in-hand with the tribes locally, we fished together, we worked together. We have members in our locals that are members of the tribes, whether it be the Lummy, whether it be the Tsunamish, pick your tribe in the northwest Washington, many of those members are tribal members. We have the Crow tribe in Wyoming that wants this facility built, because it's gonna directly affect their livelihood. And I know there's a lot of people here in western Washington, the trains are gonna affect them as well, but we also have a way to mitigate those problems and challenges. We can build overpasses, we can build new bridges, that's all infrastructure.
Thirty seconds, please.
And we'll build it all. You talk about geothermal, you talk about solar, you talk about wind power, we'll build all those too, but for right now, what we have right now is oil and gas industry. And you talk about these trains going through here, British Columbias shipped out eighty percent of the coal from the, from the United States, and three billion of it was invested in those, in those facilities in British Columbia that they will build. These trains are gonna go through here whether we build this or not. It's a dry port facility.
Time.
That's the most important thing, is it's a port facility that we need to encourage. Thank you for your time.
Trevor Smith, Darcy Jones, and Bob Carmichael.
My name's Darcy Jones with Jones Engineers. I'm here representing Kai Tech USA with regard to the Comprehensive Plan Update. The county and all the cities have adopted the multi-jurisdictional resolution for population and employment allocation, with the exception of the city of Bellingham, and we think that's short-sighted. Both Planning Commissions, city and county, have recommended unanimously to adopt the multi-jurisdictional resolution. The final impact, the final environmental impact statement was prepared and updated recently to include an alternative that would fall just, I think you heard today, three thousand people short of the multi-jurisdictional resolution. That's three thousand people in the whole county over the next twenty years. We think that's kind of splitting hairs. We think the multi-jurisdictional is the responsible way to go. It'll allow for proper planning in the future for, for things that probably, it'll be ten, twelve years before those UGA areas even begin to build, but we need to be planning for that now. And the city of Bellingham believes they have adequate land supply to accommodate their housing right now, but we don't agree. And I've presented quite a bit of evidence, you heard from Mary Kay, there's other evidence that the, the methodology that was adopted doesn't include wetland buffers. You don't, you don't take wetland buffers out of, of a density calculation for capacity? That seems very odd to me. The, the, the stream buffers were applied at twenty-five feet by the county, but the methodology prescribes that each city should provide the county supplemental data based on their own shoreline management plan. Those stream buffers range from fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty feet wide in the city. There's twenty-nine miles of streams in the city, but that never happened. That supplement was never done. I checked with the city just yesterday. All of this affects developable land supply. I truly believe the market factor should be more robust. The market factor is set at fifteen percent for residential land. That means eighty-five percent of the vacant residential land in the city is gonna be built out in the next twenty years. A fifteen percent market factor means the assumption that eighty-five percent of everything else is gonna get built out. I don't think that's realistic, you know? And City of Spokane, when they dropped their, their safety factor in favor of only having a market factor, they raised their market factor
Thirty seconds, please.
to thirty percent. We think there's, there's a capital facilities planning in place by the city. It's been done. It can be updated along with the rest of the city. We believe a moderate readjustment of the UGA boundaries to take into some efficient lands that can help make sure that there's adequate variety of, of housing and reasonably affordable housing. We believe that could go a long way to stemming potential sprawl into more
Time.
inappropriate areas. Thank you.
Bob Carmichael, Kurt Venisla, and Linda Twitchell.
Thank you very much, Bob Carmichael. I'm here on behalf of Kai Tech, seventeen hundred D Street. I am going to talk about just one thing. I was sitting here listening to the presentation from the city of Bellingham this afternoon that you heard, and one of the pieces of information you got about cost was very interesting. It's something that was part of the discussion at the Bellingham City Planning Commission, and you didn't hear and you didn't hear the whole story on cost, so I want to give you the rest of the story tonight. Because some of you were calculating, how much is this per person? And the numbers are pretty staggering. So what, what you should know is that as part of that process, we looked at the integration of the KaiTech, South KaiTech property into Bellingham somewhat holistically, not simply as one piece of property coming into the city. We looked at the fact that there is the need for a sewer pump station and sewer infrastructure improvements along Guide Meridian. Presently, there's 169 acres of property that was associated with a proposed annexation called the Klein Kelly Annexation. A number of people who have been holding on to property on Meridian Street for many, many years in the UGA have not been able to come into the city of Bellingham because nobody can pay for those sewer infrastructure improvements. Also, there's another 80 acres in the city limits of Bellingham adjacent to that, just north of Horton Road, that can't come into the city, or is in the city, I'm sorry, but can't develop because of those deficiencies in infrastructure. One of the things that would happen if the South KaiTech property were brought into the UGA is the whole property's, all of the area's resources could be devoted to making those infrastructure improvements. And if that happened, and those industrial lands, which would provide jobs, were brought into the city, because it's 169 acres of light industrial zoning, and the 80 acres in the city is also light industrial zoning, the projections become much different in terms of cost to the taxpayers in the city. Now, keep in mind that these are deficiencies that exist already.
Thirty seconds, please.
It's not the fault of KaiTech or anybody else, but they're deficiencies that exist. We asked Hart Hodges of Western Washington University to look at this issue. He ran the same model that the city used, the same exact, in fact, it was the city's model, he gave Hart Hodges access to it. And what he came out with in his final analysis was that if you looked at, after 20 years, the 169 acres developed at light industrial zoning, it would be a net positive of $63 million. That's not counting the city property, that's just what's in the UGA that hasn't been able to develop, that's in the existing city UGA. If you looked at it at half of that, 80 acres only, it would be $16.8 million net positive to the city, not a negative. That material's in the record, I just wanted to highlight it for you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Venish. I'm the interim planning and public works director for the Lummi Nation. We have given you two letters on the Cherry Point UGA, one in the summer and one in December. Unfortunately, it appears that my December letter has been misconstrued, and so after conferring with Lummi leadership, I was directed to draft another letter, which I've done, and it's been reviewed and approved by Lummi leadership. So it's, it's short, I'll read it to you briefly. I'm ready to clarify my letter of December 10th, 2015 regarding the Watkin County 2015 urban growth area review, the Cherry Point UGA proposal. The existing industrial facilities operating at Cherry Point are important to the local, regional, and national economy. Therefore, my earlier comments were directed at future uses outside of the current activities of the area. As you may know, the Lummi Nation has consistently expressed serious concern over uses such as the proposed Pacific Gateway Terminal. The adverse impact of this development to be, to the Lummi community and all of Watkin County would be significant, and can easily be avoided by thoughtfully implementing language that preserves the current uses of, in the area while precluding harmful new uses. Thank you for taking the time to listen and consider our concerns. We would also like to take this opportunity to thank you and your staff for their hard work in assembling the best possible vision for the Cherry Point UGA. Now, I'd like to pivot slightly to another topic that's minor in comparison, but county zoning and Lummi zoning aren't the same. And so as a result of that, we have a higher density projection than you have. And I would encourage you to direct your staff to come and work with our office so that your population projections, at least for the reservation, are accurate. That's, we're all going to be better off if we're using the same data set, and I would just encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Twitchell, Bob Brandon, and Abe Jacobson.
Linda Twitchell with the Building Industry Association. You're saving the best for last, right? Please tell me, that's what we're all doing here.
We're not even close.
Not necessarily, okay.
Do you want to get back and sit down?
Alrighty. Get into my three minutes here real quick. We are wanting to speak in favor of the city planning commission and county planning commission recommendation to expand the Bellingham UGA in two directions, into the KaiTech property and into the South U Street. Bellingham leads housing costs in this county, and for those who don't know, Watkin County for the last two years has had the fourth highest housing prices in the state, according to the University of Washington-run Sted real estate center. The big problem here, nobody's making profits over what they used to. The big problem here is lack of what we call buildable land in Bellingham. As the planning department pointed out today, most of the existing UGA is already built out. What they didn't mention is that most of the annexed land and other land that we call buildable land in Bellingham is, according to the planning department, impacted by critical areas, wetlands, steep slopes. You might be able to build there, but it's going to be expensive because you need engineering, you need creative ways of dealing with these things, and this goes, flies in the face of affordability. Part of what we are concerned about is that if we don't, there's no silver bullet answer to affordable, really affordable, market affordable housing in Bellingham. But we need to provide a variety of housing types, of opportunities, of, types of housing. Market research by both the Realtors and the National Association of Home Builders shows that 76% or better of Americans want single-family homes. Yet Bellingham is still counting a major portion of the growth there is going to go into urban villages, basically multiple rise, multiple family housing. Look at what's already happened. The fastest-growing towns, cities in Watkin County are Ferndale and Linden. Ferndale gave you figures this afternoon that indicates they're one of the fastest-growing areas in Western Washington. We are concerned that we have an urban center that is setting things up so that we're not going to be able to absorb people into that urban center, that they're going to go elsewhere, and then we end up with the sprawl everybody is concerned about. One possible answer would be higher density, but Bellingham has a very bad history of the city council saying, sure, why not, whenever the neighborhood associations say, density's great as long as you do it somewhere else, which is pretty much what happens in Bellingham. So I am concerned that infill and density is not the answer. Urban villages, the market analysis tends to go away from that, and what we're actually seeing is people moving to the other towns. The statistic I saw was that if you can commute 20 minutes or less, that's generally for many people acceptable, and that's exactly what we've got with Linden and Ferndale. So please look at the overall situation and look beyond
Thirty seconds, please.
the statistics that you, that you might be getting. One statistic I do want to mention, the South U Street area, the amount of money they say it's going to bring into the city, that was presented to the planning commission earlier this year as existing deficiencies. The fire station they're talking about is needed already by existing neighborhoods surrounding that area. Lake pad and water quality is not an issue. They studied it, there was one fish with PCBs and it was traced back to the hatchery. That's not an issue. So please, I encourage you to look a little deeper than some of these obvious answers, and be happy to write to you in more detail later. Thank you.
Is Bob Brandon here? Abe Jacobson, then Virginia Malmquist, then Jerry Schuster.
Good evening. I'm Abe Jacobson, and I live in Bellingham at 2314 Samish Way. I come from a union family. I was in UPTD, Local 1676. My wife was a vice president of her AFT Local. My son is in the Registered Nurses Union, WSNA, and my daughter is a full-time, lifelong organizer, God help her, for the Unite Here Hotel Workers Union. So we're pro-union. We stood on the picket lines at the Tessaro Refinery in March Point to support our brothers and sisters in the steelworkers there when they were getting hammered by the refinery and by the poor safety practices of that refinery. I think it's unfortunate that this argument has gotten misled, perhaps by communications from the Northwest Jobs Alliance. They have alleged that the Lummi Indian Nation is seeking to shut down Cherry Point. That is anything but the case. The present wonderful jobs, 2,000 wonderful jobs at Cherry Point, will continue under the Lummi Indian Business Council letter's request. There is no curtailing of these wonderful, well-paid jobs, and yet so many people in our community are living in fear because they have been given disinformation, and that is a real shame. The trouble with exporting crude oil is that you lose those jobs. You just attach the pipeline to an oil tanker and send it to China, and you don't do the high-value-added jobs of refining here. So completely within the context of the Lummi Indian Business Council's letter, you can continue to do high-value-added refining of North American crude, you can sell that North American crude and, to the North American market, not dilute it by sending it to China.
Thirty seconds, please.
And I support, therefore, the letter of December 10th of the Lummi Indian Business Council. We need to support the treaty rights of the Lummi Indians as affirmed in the 1855 Treaty and the Bolt Decision. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Virginia Malmquist, and yes, I worked on most of your campaigns, and I enjoyed it thoroughly, and did so with the hope that you would carry the responsibility of public trust really seriously. My grandmother was born in 1893. My granddaughter's likely to live to 2100. Her granddaughter will go another century beyond that, perhaps. This is only a 10-year plan, but as such, it needs to be aiming in the right direction. And while you plan for just the next 10, please keep the next 200, 300 in your mind. Climate change is coming, the research says that the Pacific Northwest is going to be one of the least impacted of all areas. As such, we're probably looking at a huge influx of people. As the droughts hit the south-central part of the country, or even up into Iowa, as the south gets inundated with heat, we're going to be looking at tons, thousands, tens of thousands of people trying to immigrate in here, and we need to have a plan in place. To do so, I believe that we need to have a healthy environment first, because without that, we are nothing. And then think about infill, think about jobs that are healthy. Why we have a moratorium on windmills boggles my mind, but it is, those are potentially good jobs. No one has mentioned community solar. Community solar is an opportunity to put solar panels on top of public buildings, whether they're city buildings, county buildings, you name, schools, you name it, and have community members invest in them, providing the money for, the investment money. And then they get some of the money back out of the panels, and the host for that, of that building gets the electricity for free. This is a no-brainer, no investment on part of the county or the city or the, or the school, and yet it creates jobs, provides lower costs for the county on utilities, and those are high-paying jobs. I hope that as you look towards the future, you take a really long look and see what would you like it to be in your grandchildren's grandchildren when they come of age here? What would you like it to be? And yes, fossil fuels are dirty.
Thirty seconds, please.
I drove here, I use, I use those fossil fuels, and I would like us to aim towards in the next 10, 20, 30 years, towards a place where we don't drive here. We bring our, if we do, it's in our electric car or on our bikes, because you've made biking user-friendly in this county, because you've made electrical cars user-friendly in this county. Make transportation something that doesn't pollute, make living something that doesn't pollute. Keep your mind focused on
Time.
the multiple generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerry Schuster, then Tim Scott, then Peter Holcomb.
Hi, my name's Jerry Schuster, and I live out near Everson. I'm a small business owner and a sailor. A lot of people just got together not too long ago in Paris. 192 countries or so sent representatives, and plus tens of thousands, if not more, people all think climate change is happening. Probably is. We just got back from a round-trip sailing trip to Tahiti, and coming back from Hawaii, we spent, well, we averaged 150 miles a day and spent a little over five days sailing in plastic. People are having an effect. Look at the map and look at how big the ocean is, and to see plastic floating, people are having an effect on the world, no matter what a few people are saying. I think we need to put a moratorium on fossil fuel, new industries coming into Bellingham and into Watkin County. It's, needs to stop. We need to be a forward-looking county and do things to not promote fossil fuels and to promote other industries and systems to get away from that. Thank you.
I'm Peter Holcomb, and my wife and I are retired high school teachers, and I'd like to talk to you about children. When I was a child, from about age eight until age 14, I worked or played outside most days without supervision. So did all the other kids. We were learning how to be humans by making mistakes. As I drive around and walk around and canoe on the river, I haven't seen any free-range children. We used to, there used to be herds and flocks of free-range children. My vision for Watkin County in 20 years is lots of running, laughing, healthy, wild My vision for the future includes plenty of solar and wind chargers, possibly tide and geothermal chargers, and far less traffic. Everyone who wants a space to garden will have one. Parks will be full of food trees, and anybody can take an apple or a handful of berries in season. The people are more animated in my, in my 20-year future and excited by life, but they're also more deeply content. I think, I think they've grown up a bit from where we are now, and they're not so frantic to own stuff. Everybody needs and wants to work, and every person is entitled to meaningful work, and there are plenty of tasks that need doing, and are, and they're not now being done, some of them. The Watkin County of my vision is only a short-term employment, unemployment due to disability or longer-term infancy and advanced age. Parks have places where anyone can sign out a batman or a croquet set, a frisbee or a basketball. Some even have kayaks and skiffs to check out. Fewer toys in the county, but many more of them being used.
Thirty seconds, please.
And then Tony Larson, and then Evan Haskell.
Joanna Shutter, a Washington State resident, Seattle, Washington. Just wanted to let you know that I come from a train family, and so I've been all the way across the United States three times, as well as my father was the taxes, he worked with the taxes for the Northern Pacific and the Burlington Northern for several years, and knowing all the Texas assessors all the way across Montana. So I have a little bit of experience with rails, as well as also being an environmental activist, and I've been working on this issue since 2012. So when I found out that we were going to be having a lot of coal trains and a lot of oil trains up and down our area, I started looking into it. And we haven't talked about the safety of the trains. The trains are very dangerous. I actually just talked with a neighbor of mine who also has family worked with the Great Northern for years, and he worked in the rail yards, and he's saying that, you know, these trains aren't going to stop for anything. They're going to be keeping coming. And even if we do civil disobedience, they also can't stop the trains for the civil disobedience. Thank goodness for the Delta 5, when they did stop the train for eight hours two years ago, to say this doesn't work. So we're looking at these trains, and right now, we're looking at the cars that they're dealing with, and the cars are not safe. They've come out with that 20 years ago, that the cars aren't safe, and they're still not. They've asked to put new trains and cars on the line, but that's not expected for the next couple of years. So we also have to look at that, because they aren't safe. We've already talked about what happened in Montreal, but if any of these cars, because I've been looking and going to the gorge, going, looking at the Columbia River, looking up and down the Puget Sound, and what would happen if any one of these cars at any time fell into these rivers? We're going all the way from Powder Basin from Wyoming. It's not a pretty sight. We've been really lucky. We have been really lucky that none of these trains have blown up. And then when you come to the coal, every coal car, 600 pounds of coal per coal comes flying off those trains, and that's going into our water systems. Now, if any of those trains fell into our waters, we're done. So now we have the Lummi, and we have the Lummi who have fishing rights. We've said yes that we are going to support these fishing rights. And the Lummi, their practices, as well as all Native American practices, and they're looking to the seventh generation.
Thirty seconds, please.
Thank you. In 1855, that was 160 years ago, that's our seventh generation. We are in this seventh generation. And look at what's happened, we've done from here to now. Are we willing to make it worse from here to the next 160 people, this next 160 years? Because that's what we're looking at. I thank the Lummi. Please accept their December 10, 2015 letter. And also, I'd like to ask you to include fossil fuels and fracking. I didn't even get to that one, but
Time.
It's some really great. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Tony Larson, Bellingham. And I'm the president of the Waukam Business Alliance. And first and foremost, I want to let you know that the Waukam Business Alliance did not approach this issue. Our members approached us, and for a very simple reason, and something that I just want to make sure that everybody here understands, and that is that this is not about coal. As you guys know, the shipping terminal project is vested, and you guys act in quasi, you know, as quasi jurors. And if and when that issue ever comes in front of you, it's probably going to come in front of you, and you're going to have to act in a very different way. But our interest is, we sent a letter out, or I sent a letter out to you today. It's in your email. I've got copies of it here. And on it, there are just over 50 local business folks that have co-signed on that letter. And the reason that they're involved is they're very concerned. They're very concerned, not about some potential project in the future, they're concerned about their existing jobs and the jobs of their employees. They represent thousands of employees, and those employees were here tonight, because they're very concerned about their jobs. And why are they concerned? Because in the comprehensive plan, as you know, and I've read the whole thing, and I'm assuming that all of you have read the same thing, 11 chapters, seven indices, and in that, words matter. And it's going to be in front of you over the next six months, and you're going to have to make some decisions. I was really happy to hear that the Lummi representative wants to recognize the existing Cherry Point business as important, because that's what the letter that we provided to you asked for, something very simple, that you recognize a reality, and that is that the Cherry Point, the businesses at Cherry Point are an economic driver in Waukam County, a significant one. There was a study that was referenced a little bit earlier. I brought a copy of it for you. I sent it to each of you for your email, and it really is amazing. I mean, the folks that were represented here tonight, the reason that they're here, even though they have no idea what the, some of them have no idea what the comprehensive plan is, it's because their wages are two and a half times that of the average wage in Waukam County. The companies out there, they provide volunteers for activities, nonprofit organizations and activities all over the county. They sponsor events, you know, they give back. They're the biggest contributor to United Way that gives to a number of different nonprofits. It's very important. And so what the Waukam Business Alliance and what a lot of people here tonight want you to do is simply recognize that fact in the comp plan. The fact that existing business at Cherry Point, and that Cherry Point as a heavy industrial area
Thirty seconds, please.
That was, you know, what, 20-some years ago, in the 1980s, there was a similar group of council members that recognized and thought it was important to make that heavy industrial out there, a manufacturing area. The economic impact of that has been substantial, it still is. So we're not talking about hypothetical, we're talking about real people's lives, their families, and their jobs. So as it moves along, we'd like to engage with you, and I would really appreciate if you would take a look at the language, specific language that we've asked for in Chapter Two and Chapter Seven, Land Use and Economics. Thanks a lot, appreciate it. And I will leave this for each of you.
Evan, and then Ray Pierce, and then Kaylee Yasuka.
Good evening. My name is Evan Haskell. I'm the president of Haskell Corporation located here in Bellingham, and I am one of the employers and employees that Tony is referring to just a moment ago. I'm here today to ask the council to consider the far-reaching effects of de-industrializing, downzoning, and limiting Cherry Point businesses' ability to responsibly exist, grow, and flourish, because I strongly feel Cherry Point is one of Waukam County's few remaining economic drivers. Haskell Corporation was founded in 1890, and I am now the fifth generation running this company. Our company typically employs around 200 people, and we've employed over 15,000 people in our history. Companies like Haskell Corporation exist and are only able to survive multiple generations because of businesses like those located at Cherry Point in the industrial zone. We are one of the thousands of vendors that are directly and indirectly supported by these businesses. As we've all recently seen in the Bellingham Herald and heard on the local radio stations, Waukam County does not have significant numbers of family-wage employers. It'd be a county-wide economic disaster to lose these important companies and industries. The Cherry Point companies do pay some of the highest wages in the entire county. The Cherry Point companies pay significant taxes, and to be frank, our county is dependent on them. The Cherry Point companies support our local technology and community colleges and are vital to their success. The Cherry Point companies and their employees are some of the most generous around, supporting most of the non-profits, such as United Way, YMCA, Boys and Girls Clubs, Red Claws, I could sit up here for three minutes and name them all, as well as funding vital improvements to our parks, fields, and resources that we all are able to enjoy. As an avid outdoorsman, I too enjoy the natural resources and water bodies and mountains. I'm a strong supporter of responsible growth, but growth is required for economic prosperity. Because if a business isn't growing, they are shrinking. And as we all know, shrinking means fewer jobs, less companies investing and choosing to invest elsewhere, and overall economic strain on our community. As we all know, these employers have enough
Thirty seconds, please.
Trying to compete in a global market. Let's not further complicate their ability to thrive at the local level. I'd also like to say, or ask that you not cross up with proposed language with your feelings about a coal export terminal with the existing industries at Cherry Point. I ask you to please oppose any language that would limit, stop, or otherwise jeopardize the future of the Cherry Point industry. Thank you.
Ray, then Kaylee, and then Jacob Drolle.
Hi, my name is Ray Pierce, and I am also a resident of Bellingham. And after watching all these people in here in standing room only, most of the people that were here, I know a lot of them on both sides of this discussion, and most of them that I know really respect the environment. I do. I'm an avid outdoorsman. I bike, I hike, I boat, I do everything outdoors. I love it here for that. I'm also in industry, and I respect industry. All of the folks I know in industry also respect it. And the question is, do we need industry? And the answer is clearly yes. Do we need it here? Again, clearly, it's yes, because, you know, people are concerned about the environment and protecting the environment. We talk about one world and one globe, and global economy, and global warming, and global pollution. Well, when they closed Georgia Pacific down, where I worked in 2001, the facility equipment was sold to overseas, Indonesia. And do they have EPA there? No. They're dumping raw effluent into the ocean, one world, one ocean. They're dumping smoke and pollution into the air, one world, one air. So we need to keep industry here so we can keep an eye on it. So we can make rules and regulations that make it very uncomfortable. As one person said earlier, it seems like we don't like industry here. We can make it uncomfortable and chase them away, and say we didn't, but words matter, so it will chase them away. We all use the products of industry. Everybody here, unless you're conserving energy, when you get home tonight, you're going to flip a switch to turn on your power and get your light. You're going to turn a dial to get your heat. So industry is critical. You all know that. I'm not preaching to the choir, I'm sure, but, or I am, but we all use it. The signs that everybody's holding, a factory made those signs. We go out and we buy things. We use industry. We want to protect Mother Earth, as one person said, it's in peril. So we need to keep industry here. We need to be friendly to industry so we can keep an eye on it. If we chase it away, we won't be able to watch it. Again, charities that are funded by industry. I'm on the Board of Directors for Blue Skies for Children, and we rely on these industries for a lot of our money. Folks that work in these high-paying jobs, they give money to our charities. And so we need them to stay here. And I'm asking the council to reject language that makes it difficult for these industries to grow and manage themselves. If we have language that restricts them from upgrading their facilities, or, you know, that may be paranoia, as someone is saying, but from what I
Thirty seconds, please.
The language is saying, essentially, we don't want you here, we want, you know, we want to stifle what you do. So I would ask that you reject the proposed language that I read in the UGA proposal. Thanks.
Thank you. Kaylee, and then Jacob Drolle.
Okay, I want to kind of pull the council here. It's 10 o'clock. We've been through six sheets. We have three and a half left. Do we need a little 10-minute break, or do you want to keep on trucking? A break?
Break.
Okay, we're going to recess for 10 minutes, be back at, well, let's do 12 minutes, be
Like to call the meeting back to order.
That's good energy.
Got us? Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, our next contestants are Beth Brownfield, Diane Garmo, Deana Jensen, Sandy Robson, and Wendy Harris. Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Beth Brownfield from Bellingham, Washington, and I want to thank you for your patience and for your attention to all of us who are speaking today. My husband and I moved to Bellingham in 2004. Our daughter and our two grandchildren, Erin, 12, and Dylan, 8, live in Bellingham. I stand by Lummi Nation and with all original nations and people of this planet in their sacred relationships and obligations to our earth. Four years ago, I heard a hereditary chief from Vancouver Island talking about being salmon people, and how their survival as a people and a culture depended upon the salmon. He explained that they had lived in the same place since time immemorial, and as salmon disappeared, so would the people and their culture. The settlers, on the other hand, did not depend on such things as salmon or environmental conditions. If disasters or other conditions became difficult for survival in the place where they lived, they would move to a different place and start afresh. We are here tonight commenting on a, quote, "comprehensive plan." Perhaps the plan is misnamed, as it is a plan for 20 years into the future, which is one generation. Original nations and peoples' thinking and planning goes out seven generations, which is 140 years. If we, as a county, make decisions only 20 years out, we will fall far short of protecting our children's children's future. When the nations signed the Treaty of Point Elliott in 1855, they included the right to fish and hunt and gather in their usual and custom territories. And as Isaac Stevens said, "As long as the waters flow or grass grows upon the earth or the sun rises to show your pathway, so long you shall be protected." My ask of you tonight is, consider the damage that has been done to our waters, our
Thirty seconds, please.
...in our land in only 150 years. Will you consider every aspect of this comprehensive plan and think further than 20 years to reclaim and protect our waters? Will you ensure clean air for all of us to breathe? Will you protect the lands where we grow our food and the beauty and wonder of this place? Finally, would you risk your seven-generation
Time.
...lives for your children in short-term gain? Thank you.
Diane Garmo.
Hello, Waukam County Council. Thank you so much for your work, and thank you for listening to us and inviting us, and it's all good. Our daughter and our two grandchildren, Aaron, 12, and Dylan, 8, live in Bellingham. I stand by Lummi Nation and with all original nations and people of this planet in their sacred relationships and obligations to our earth. Four years ago, I heard a hereditary chief from Vancouver Island talking about being salmon people and how their survival as a people and a culture depended upon the salmon. He explained that they had lived in the same place since time immemorial, and as salmon disappeared, so would the people and their culture. The settlers, on the other hand, did not depend on such things as salmon or environmental conditions. If disasters or other conditions became difficult for survival in the place where they lived, they would move to a different place and start afresh. We are here tonight commenting on a, quote, "comprehensive plan." Perhaps the plan is misnamed, as it is a plan for 20 years into the future, which is one generation. Original nations and peoples' thinking and planning goes out seven generations, which is 140 years. If we, as a county, make decisions only 20 years out, we will fall far short of protecting our children's children's future. When the nations signed the Treaty of Point Elliott in 1855, they included the right to fish and hunt and gather in their usual and custom territories. And as Isaac Stevens said, "As long as the waters flow or grass grows upon the earth or the sun rises to show your pathway, so long you shall be protected." My ask of you tonight is, consider the damage that has been done to our waters—
Thirty seconds, please.
—and our land in only 150 years. Will you consider every aspect of this comprehensive plan and think further than 20 years to reclaim and protect our waters? Will you ensure clean air for all of us to breathe? Will you protect the lands where we grow our food and the beauty and wonder of this place? Finally, would you risk your seven-generation lives for your children in short-term gain? Thank you.
Diane Garmo.
Hello, Wacom County Council. Thank you so much for your work, and thank you for listening to us and inviting us, and it's all good. I'm Diane Garmo. I was born and raised in Bellingham, and I love my hometown. I'm a proud Bellinghamster. I'm proud of how we care for each other and how we take care of each other. I've served on the Board of Directors for Interfaith Coalition. I volunteered with our local Red Cross chapter on the Disaster Action Team, and I am concerned about the prospect of national and local disasters. What I'm asking now is that, as we plan for our future, we do not increase the potential of disaster in our community. As retired public teacher and coach, I have huge concerns for our future. I'm hopeful that council members will take actions that will safeguard us from unnecessary toxins and the potential for disaster. I continue to be proud and hopeful. Thank you.
Deana Jensen.
I'm speaking first, and Deana's next.
Okay.
Just because I can't read anyone.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Thank you. Sandy Robson, Birch Bay. I don't want future additional heavy industrial development at Cherry Point, such as an export terminal that would handle, store, and ship 48 million tons of coal annually or other similar development. Further development of heavy industry at Cherry Point contradicts a number of the stated goals in our State's Growth Management Act. For example, GMA Planning Goal 13 relating to historic preservation is to identify, encourage the preservation of lands, sites, and structures that have historical or archaeological significance according to RCW 3670A.02013. That RCW states that the goal shall be used exclusively for the purpose of guiding the development of comprehensive plans and development regulations. Wachikin or Cherry Point and the waterways surrounding it are culturally significant area for the Lummi Nation and other tribes going back thousands of years. A section of Cherry Point designated as Site 45WH1 is the first documented and the most extensively studied archaeological site in Wacom County. In the summer of 2011, Site 45WH1 was disturbed and damaged by an engineering consulting company hired by SSA PIT to do geotechnical work on its project. The engineering company cleared nine acres, drilled 19 boreholes from 80 to 130 feet deep, performed 19 cone penetration tests 100 feet deep, destroyed close to three acres of wetlands, and illegally filled approximately 1.2 acres of wetlands at the Cherry Point proposed project site for GPT. One of the boreholes at the site was drilled within the area designated as Site 45WH1. This work was done without authorization. Washington Department of Ecology said in its September 23, 2011 letter to PIT that the work done was in violation of state law. Also failing to comply with the requirement Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, SSA Marine PIT did not consult first with Native American tribes Lummi and Nuksek about potential archaeological impacts of that unauthorized land clearing and drilling. These are just some of the impacts to its nation, culturally and spiritually significant resources that I imagine the Lummi Nation had in mind and has in mind when it submitted its December 10, 2015 comment on the county comp plan suggesting this new policy be added. The shipment of coal or crude oil from any new shipping terminal or pier or any existing terminal or pier is prohibited. This suggested policy not only protects Lummi Nations and other tribes culturally and spiritually significant areas and their treaty rights, but it also protects Wacom County's environment and health, since exporting crude oil and coal—
Thirty seconds, please.
—at Cherry Point would result in countless adverse impacts. I don't think that our county comp plan should encourage or even allow any future further—not existing, future further—additional heavy industrial development at Cherry Point, especially crude oil or coal export. Thank you very much for listening.
Deana Jensen, Birch Bay. Thank you, council members, for hearing our comments tonight, and I would like to acknowledge that I am on land that is the traditional territory of the Lummi and Nuksek people. It is my hope that we will continue to nurture our relationship with our Coast Salish neighbors and the shared responsibilities to their homelands where we all reside today. I have submitted some other comments regarding the Wacom County Comprehensive Plan update, and I wanted to speak at this hearing about messaging, which I feel is hazardous and harmful to members of our county that is being put forth by some leaders of the Northwest Jobs Alliance and the Northwest Washington Building and Construction Council, AFL-CIO. These leaders are trying to tell us that industries who process toxic products offer the best jobs in the county. What does that say about what these leaders want for our workers? When we continue to reinforce dependence on jobs that rely on hazardous and toxic processing of toxic products, we are sentencing our county to continually compounding damage. How can we continue to glorify jobs whose tendency is to injure living beings and toxify regions, starting with the place that they are extracted, extending on to those through which they are shipped, and following on to where they are consumed and dispersed? How can we continue to consign workers and the lands and living things around them to more generations' worth of injury and poisoning? Council members, please insist that we have effective language and policy in our growth plan and develop effective means to enforce these that help us begin to offer hope to our workers, that they can make a better type of living than they have ever known by enriching and protecting their surroundings and their families, and by feeding the planet that feeds them. Thank you.
Is Wendy Harris here?
I haven't seen her.
Okay. Deb Cruz, Yvonne Goldsmith, and Damon Sweeney.
Yvonne gave her time to meet.
Pardon me?
Yvonne Goldsmith gave her time to meet. Is that okay?
Yeah, okay. Is Deb Cruz here? She's next. I guess not. Go ahead.
Good evening. I've been in Bellingham for four years. My name is Jay Markarian, M-A-R-K-A-R-I-A-N. I have a master's degree in environmental engineering, undergraduate degrees in chemistry and geology. I've worked for the US EPA in Regions 1, 3, 4, 5, 9, and 10. It includes this region up here as well. Worked mostly with the Office of Emergency Response, and I've done the last 25 years working with the Department of Defense, the UN, and the State Department, working on nonproliferation issues and chemical and biological weapons programs. I find it—I don't really want to talk about me, so I'm going to shift a little bit over to a couple of observations I've had from this meeting. First, you have a very difficult job as a presiding group. I come from a town in New Hampshire that went from 28,000 people as a child to 280,000 people. So the issue of growth—the places I took cows from one field to another are gone, the streams that my father couldn't fish for salmon now have salmon. So the issue here is, in this particular community—in the town is—the city is Nashua, means beautiful river with a pebbly bottom—from the Nashui Indians. I'd like to leave you on the growth issue of the concept that how can a city grow that much and maintain a thriving environment such that repeatedly it is one of the best places in the United States to live, year after year? It's consistently given that honor. I know the streams. I've ice skated on most of them. I know the lakes, the rivers, and everything around there. A thriving community with an unprecedented growth, as much of New England has had. Now for a little bit of point of history on technologies and coal and oil. Technologies move on, and if we look at history—and I'll go back to New England. First, it was the logging, the timber, followed by the sheep industry. Most of New England was denuded for the sheep industry. Then came textiles, the shoe industry, electronics. Digital corporations came in everywhere, or the high-tech industries. They move, they shift, and they continue to change. You have before you, on this issue of the terminal—
Thirty seconds, please.
—that it's both a bulk facility on one end of the spectrum of discussion and a coal and oil on the other end of the spectrum. I would submit that—I'm actually against coal and oil, but for right now, I would go for it because technologies move on. The next generation has to pick this up, or in the next few years. I suspect there's only 20 years left of coal and oil. What's more important, and I'll leave on this point, is I looked at the terminal as one of the first ecoports in the world. My training, my background, working with EIS statements, working some of the nastiest places on the globe in many countries, I looked at this terminal as lemon-making lemonade, that it was going to be the first of the eco-friendly ports setting a trend and a standard throughout the globe. So I'd like to thank you for giving me this time.
Damon Sweeney, Monica Ailey, and Wendy Court-Munch. Okay, Charles Law.
Good evening, council. First of all, I have some sheets I wanted to pass out. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the homeland of the Coast Salish people. Charles Law, Bellingham. It's a shame we had this false flag of job losses in Cherry Point. I'd like to talk more about the comp plan and Chapter 1. I'm not going to give you any of my credentials other than my carbon master with Washington State University. According to Albert A. Bartlett, the author of The First Law of Sustainability and the winner of the AAPT Distinguished Service Citation in 1970, the Thomas Jefferson Award in 1972, the Robert L. Sterns Award in 1974, the Robert A. Malkin Award in 1981, the AAPT Melba Newland Phillips Award in 1990, the MK King Hubbard Award for Excellence in Energy Education in 2005, and the Lifetime Achievement Award, Pay Center Award in 2006, and the Global Media Award for Excellence in Population Reporting in 2008. Albert A. Bartlett said, simple arithmetic—and that's what I've just given you, simple arithmetic—shows that with every small rate of growth it continued adds to an absurd, large, and plainly unsustainable population size and rates of consumption. For example, a simple 1% rate of growth in the present human population would result in a doubling of the population in each 70 years. And I think one of our speakers spoke of the next generations. Professor Bartlett added—and this came from Wikipedia—Professor Bartlett added, "Often explain how sustainable growth is a contradiction." His view was based on the fact that a modest percentage growth will equal a huge escalation over a relatively short period of time.
Thirty seconds, please.
The exponential power may be potentially damaging when applied to the human population. A population of 10,000 individuals, if left to grow at a constant rate of 7%, not 1.3, but 7%, would reach a population size of 10 million over 100 years. Exponential growth of human population and natural resource consumption can't happen forever. Albert A. Bartlett. The point is, I agree with almost everybody that has skin in the game when it comes to the environment and their housing and their property rights. If we keep the numbers that were presented by the state of Washington and we use these figures, we will be living on top of Mount Baker in the Nuksek River, not near the Nuksek River. Thank you.
Peter Mill-Malley, Patrick Alisi, and Charlie Wilson.
It used to be Alisi, but somebody spelled it wrong, and so now it's Alisi. Patrick Alisi, Birch Bay. I looked at the show tonight, and I thought, they need to charge for intermission. It's going to be good. I've been enjoying all this. Now, you know how I feel about growth management. I think it's important to have urban areas for growth of industry, for growth of where you put people. You know that I don't like everybody living out in five acres because it confuses future growth. Bellingham doesn't—we don't want a house there. Oh, it's going to cost a lot. In England, you have areas right next to the town, open fields. They can grow there. I think it happens in Germany, too. Now, what's a job? A job is something that adds to the environment. It doesn't take away from the environment. If you think about it, it does add to the environment. And yes, you've heard this from me before. We have the economy, and we have the ecology. They come from the same root word, a Greek word that means taking care of and planting the home. Now, we have an industry that wants to be at Cherry Point. I want to have engineering industry at Cherry Point. I want to have a container industry there. It would really bring jobs to the area. Yes, it would impact the area with trains, but it would impact the area with a lot of really good jobs. The job that's called for coal, here we have the economy. Here we have the ecology. They're working together. No. They take something away from the ecology, and they call it profit. We don't need that. Thank you.
Charlie Wilson, Jackie Webley, and Teresa Smith. Bob and Lynn Smith, Sean and Kerry Reichenbach, and Sandy Keithley. John Shaughnessy, Whitney—
Gonzalez. Whitney Gonzalez.
Okay, thank you. And Tim Meick. Go ahead.
I want to make sure that everybody can hear me. My name's Whitney Gonzalez, and I live in Wacom County, actually a stone throw away from the city. I want to say I am one of the fortunate ones that it's past my bedtime. And I want to thank you for staying up for this. I am a single parent, and I'm raising three amazing young men. And the reason why I can do this is because the job that was offered to me from the Cherry Point Industrial Zone. And it's so important to me because by me going to work, I'm able to show my kids how important it is to go to work and come home and feel proud that you put in a hard day's work. I've had a lot of encouragement through the community. Mr. Sidhu was actually one that—I sat across the desk from him, and I said, "These are my options. What do I do?" And he was able to point me in the right direction. And I am very fortunate on that. But one thing that has been missed throughout all of this—I feel weird having people behind me. But anyways, one of the things that I think is really important is out in the refinery specifically, their safety and their environmental programs are so effective. They do huge education on it. I mean, everybody that goes into work, you know when you're setting up your job that you need to set it up so that you're preventing any accident in the environment while you're working, you're maintaining, and you're keeping an eye on it. And as you're closing out your jobs, you're cleaning up after it so that you are taking care of the environment. Any small spill, anything that gets on the ground or anything, it has to be reported immediately. There are consequences for not reporting those things. This edu- This education is throughout the year. I mean, it's day in, day out. A lot of people have meetings every morning discussing these items, and then they also have monthly meetings, they have quarterly meetings. So, the environment is everybody's concern. Because while you're working there, you want to maintain your job there, too. So, it's part of your job. And that's one of the nice things about this community, is that it is a community, and the places of employment are concerned about your welfare at home, and your stuff at home is important at the work site itself. We have something to learn from both ends of the spectrum.
Thirty seconds, please.
So, thank you very much.
Tim Mayock, Beau Alpus, and Riz Fowler. After that would be Bruce Latfi.
Good evening. My name is Reese Fowler, and that's spelled R H Y S F A L E R. And I live on Donovan Avenue here in Bellingham. The county comprehensive plan is a definitive strategy that we will use to guide the development of our county, and thus will determine the ultimate economic success or failure of our county. So, if we are here this evening to comment on the plan for our future, it is critical to realistically evaluate the changing nature of our world. As has been said earlier in the evening, in the upcoming years and decades, reliance on fossil fuels will continue to decline, and at some point in the future, humanity's use of these limited resources will essentially zero out. Therefore, industries that are based upon fossil fuels will someday fade from existence. If we choose a path that allows growth into a dead-end future, then it's very possible that we'll face a future similar to Flint, Michigan, and the other troubled cities of the Rust Belt. The economic winds are changing, and it's critical that we are a forward-thinking county, not a backward-thinking one. I stand before you tonight because I am the Executive Director of Bellingham Entrepreneurs. It is my job to encourage and empower individuals to start their own businesses. One of the most highly cited reasons that both keep people in and bring people to our county is the natural beauty of our landscape and the incredible access to outdoor recreation. Throughout the world, the importance and value that people place on living a healthy and well-balanced life is at an all-time high, and here in Watcom County, this type of life is currently possible. Bellingham, and Watcom County by extension, has time and again ranked in the top five of healthiest cities in the United States. But if you support increased rail traffic, that will certainly negatively affect that ranking. Based upon this and other factors related to an increased presence of the fossil fuel industry in our county, it is enough to greatly reduce the draw that our county offers to aspiring entrepreneurs. I urge you not to support a future that places Watcom County's success on any industry that is based upon fossil fuels. Rather, choose a path that will embrace wise ecological stewardship of our county, and in doing so, support the growth of small businesses, which are the true driver of new jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Latfi, then Cade Ray, then Galen Hertz. Okay. Erin Strang, Roy Seving, and Jenna Seving. Rosa Rice. Tricia Patterson, Robert McCullough, and Amber Dew. Greta Markle. Jay. Marka Ryan, and Grace Coffey. Noah Braley, Randy Andrews, and Chuck Mather. What's that?
Curse of handwriting should be taught in schools.
Yeah, I know.
They're actually talking about that at the state legislature. You want to try this?
We'll be there soon. Liz Was. Cal Leinster, I see you. And then Pam Brady, then Lynn Murphy.
Well, good evening, Council. I'm Cal Leinster. I live in Fairhaven. I'm a real estate broker for 48 years now. And I want to express my support for the high projection population forecast, recognizing that the 1997 OFM high forecast was nearly spot-on. And I'd like to say that in spite of city staff's best intentions regarding infill and lately, we need to recognize the difference in wealth accumulation between homeowners and renters. According to Federal Reserve, a typical homeowner net worth was $195,000 in 2013 versus $5,400 for a renter. With projected price increases, the gap will widen. Artificial restrictions on single-family supply widens inequality. And it's not a worthy objective, isn't right. Recent Harvard University reported that after inflation took into account aggregate home equity increased 60% just since 2010. It's no wonder then that home equity is a major component in most families' overall wealth. Why deny a renter the opportunity to build an important nest egg for themselves? Failing to expand the U G A is a vote against housing affordability, a vote against business, a vote against equality, and a vote against the environment because the sprawl such an action would create.
Thank you. That's time.
Time?
Yeah, she called time.
Vote for the addition of both the U Street and the Kitec U G As. Thank you very much. Thanks for listening.
Pam Brady, Lynn Murphy, Susan Burgler, Rick Cunningham, and Sean Donnelly. Tim Cornelius, Spencer Palmer, Shannon Wright, Scott Sanderson. Leah Oliver, Anne Russell. Hank Kastner. Emily Krieger. And then after that would be Jacob Jones.
Hi there. My name's Emily Krieger, and I'd like to thank you all, first off, for staying here and hearing us all out. I know it means a lot to myself and everyone else in this room that we have the chance to talk to our county council like this. So, I've heard a lot of concern tonight over the future of our children, the future of Watcom County, and the jobs and the lives of future generations here. And frankly, I think it's pretty irresponsible to plan those lives and those jobs that don't even exist yet around a failing industry and a dangerous industry that is the fossil fuel industry. We cannot let this happen. Due to the recent lift of the federal ban on crude oil exports, I think it has become increasingly a concern that the Cherry Point facility will be used for crude oil exports. This is deeply concerning to me, and I know it is deeply concerning to other community members in Watcom County. And because it's late, then I will keep this short and just ask that the county council respect the Lemmy Nation's request to include specific language in the comprehensive plan that will prohibit the shipping of coal and oil from any new or any existing terminal at Cherry Point. I would like to honor this request, and I ask that each and every one of you honor that request as well. When I look in front of me, then I see a county council that I trust, and a county council that has worked really hard to get here and earn the respect of Watcom County. And I hope we can count on you to make responsible decisions for all of our futures. Thank you.
Jacob Jones. Charles Stors, Elizabeth Hines, and Seth Owens.
I'm Charlie Stors, and I do appreciate the chance to talk to you, and I'm really thankful for all the people who sat around here to listen to me, too. I would support the Lemmy Nation proposal that new industries do not get to export fossil fuels. Fossil fuels are going the way of the dinosaur. I am sorry that so many people wasted their time talking about loss of existing jobs because that's not possible with changes in the comp plan. I think it's disingenuous to think that GPT is not about coal because that's where the money is, but that's also not relevant to the comp plan. The comp plan is a 1,200-page document, which is one of the reasons why people think government is too big and too bureaucracized, and it leaves way too much power in the staff, who is the only people who get around to reading the damn thing. It is just huge and bulky and nasty. I do taxes, so I read IRS publications all the time. I know what I'm talking about here. We've got examples of bad planning. The city is really good at them. I'll point out the Maister Bike Plan. We did not know at the time of the Maister Bike Plan that it was going to screw up Alabama and screw up Ohio, and they've got different results from the Maister Bike Plan, depending upon whether it's Cornwall in Ohio or Cornwall in Alabama. So, watch out what you plan for. I would urge you, therefore, to keep the comp plan flexible. I have actually changed my mind at one point tonight, and that is the growth projections. I've been against high-numbered growth projections, but I am convinced that we do live in a beautiful part of the world, and we are going to have a lot of these economic and war and climate refugees coming here, and we had better plan for them. So, I would support us getting away from fossil fuels. I am also for us getting away from the idea of one big project that will save us. I think we've demonstrated often that having a diverse economy with lots of little drivers is a lot more sustainable than counting on one big industry holding us all together. Fracking. Fracking is a new technology. We don't really know what is going on with fracking. Let them experiment in Pennsylvania. Let them experiment in West Virginia. Do not blow up my water supply.
Thirty seconds, please.
Just, there's so much to do. I hope you have another hearing because there are so many people who wanted to talk, and I'm glad you stuck around to listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Elizabeth Hines or Seth Owens?
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Hines, and good news, you're at the end of the line. My husband's the last person, I think. Many, you probably don't recognize me because my face is usually painted black with coal dust and my sign that says, "This is what clean coal looks like." And that's how I've come to the meetings before, the public hearings. And I usually have my tape recorder here where I play the train and blast you all night long, my whole three minutes with the train, because that is the train that's immediately below my house on Boulevard Street where there are two crossings. We bought our house 16 years ago there, and the trains have rapidly increased to where they come by at a regular basis all night long, most nights. It's going to be so much worse if this Cherry Point Terminal is allowed to happen. And I definitely feel like it would be a terrible thing for that to happen, and I'm asking you to certainly say no to that. And I would also like to tell you that I am a Southern Cherokee tribal member, and I stand with the Lemmy tribe in saying absolutely no to the Cherry Point Coal Terminal. And I feel like it is a mute point to even have this discussion because I think the Lemmys will trump all other decisions made, because I think they have treaty rights that have to be honored. So, please, vote no and say no to the multipurpose coal terminal plant, to the Cherry Point Coal Terminal Plant, whatever you want to call, because the majority of the people in this town, the vast majority of the people in this town, are against it, and especially the Indians and everyone else. Thank you very much, and good night. Thanks for putting up with us.
Seth, are you Seth Owens?
Yeah.
And then anybody else that would like to speak, please come down and queue up in line so we kind of know where we're at.
Seth Owens, I live here in Bellingham, too. We all live here for a very good reason, and that's because it's a great place to live. Raspberries, salmon, you name it, we've got it all here. It's a beautiful place. There's no reason we would want to jeopardize that with coal spills, oil trains exploding. We've got enough issues as it is with the world's problems. So, hopefully, the comprehensive plan takes our future and everyone's future into account. There's been some really good speakers tonight. I wasn't going to speak, so I'm just going to say, we live here for a good reason, and it's very important what you're all doing, and I thank you very much for it.
Dan McShane, 1451 Grant Street, Bellingham. Cherry Point is not in the Mount Baker geologic hazard area. And so, there are a lot of other things on the comprehensive plan that have to be considered, but there was a change that was proposed by the planning commission, and I would just ask you simply to go back to the original language. That would be a radical departure from your current policies that, in the long run, could put thousands of people at risk. There is probably a need to change some of the language in the critical areas ordinance that current policy would allow. It certainly fits in, and I think that that's a worthwhile discussion to have. So, just a simple request would be that you go back to the staff's recommendation for geologic hazard areas regarding Lahar and mudflows off of Mount Baker. It's a real risk. Communities that have not addressed that problem in the past, because maybe they didn't understand it, leads to Mount Rainier being named the most dangerous volcano in the United States, or 23,000 people killed in Elmira, Columbia. The entire city was buried in a mudflow. There's a volcano up in British Columbia, not too far from here, Mount Meyer. It's had three Lahar flows come off of it in the last 30 years. Luckily, nobody lives there. Those traveled nine to 10 miles down the valley. So, anyway, thanks for taking that into consideration. One other geologic aspect that was raised tonight, I don't believe is addressed in the comp plan. I don't think it's an immediate pressing problem, but the comp plan is for long-term issues, and that is fracking. Bellingham, Watcom County has a lot of coal beds underneath. There was interest in fracking, and there were exploratory drill holes drilled in Watcom County during the mid-2000s. Those projects have kind of faded away just simply because natural gas prices have plummeted so much that it's no longer worthwhile. But as I think we all recognize, the economics of fossil fuels does change, and there are consequences to fracking that are beyond not just water quality, but also rural lifestyle, air quality in the vicinity. So, it's worthwhile considering that issue if you have the time to set aside besides the Cherry Point stuff. So, good luck to you.
Good evening, Watcom County Council members. Thank you for staying so late. My name is Mary Paige Lawrence. I'm a member of the Lemmy Nation Tribe. I'm a resident here in Bellingham of 22 years. I just want to remind you that there's a totem pole outside that came from my relatives. It also symbolized the fact that Watcom County and the Lemmy Nation were partners in the fishing and the logging and whatnot. And the only reason why I'm here tonight and have stayed so long is because I'd like to remind you that three whales have beached up dead within 22 years because of Cherry Point and no herring in the waters anymore. Now, I understand that there's environmental and cautious precautions taken at Cherry Point and the oil work that's being done. I just want to remind you that if there's more traffic of boats for oil or coal, that would really detriment the nature and supply of fish and land and water and air. I know a person that lives along Eldridge Avenue, where the trains come all the time, and she's always dusting her house because of the coal dust that shows up from the rail cars behind her house. So, I just want to point out that I am against any progress or expansion of Cherry Point or even for the coal that's going to be more traffic in this area. I realize that my children and my grandchildren will see more trains whether we like it or not because money is the power of all driving forces in Watcom County. But I would just like to ask that, in the future, can you please consider the fact of air and water for our children? And that these... And that these are qualities that we desire to have clean. And that that's all we're asking for, is that you please consider these two facts, that we need these for our children. And coal and oil would make it worse. There's a lot of people dying of cancer out at Lummi because they rely on shellfish and seafood.
Thirty seconds, please.
And that has gone worse over 22 years. So please consider these things. It's not just for me or the tribe or anyone. I'm just an individual trying to express my feelings. Okay. Thank you.
Paul Lawrence. I'm from Lummi Nation. And I was involved with that Simiama project, you know, gathering my ancestors that were dug up from that. You know, there was 400 truckloads of dirt taken from that area, and they got put in four different areas. And we had to go there and sift through that dirt, collecting our ancestors, to rebury them there at Simiama, which was a successful job. You know, we got it done. And I'm just kind of wondering if this goes through. Are we going to be allowed to move our ancestors from there? Or are we going to have them work around them? Or, you know, which, I don't know, you know? Not too many people can go there and recognize human remains, you know? And it's pretty difficult for, you know, you've got to have a strong mind, clean heart, you know? Because when you touch them, you know, it's really sacred, you know? And we did, separated all the bones that we gathered there, you know, from infants to elders, from little kids being in their mom's belly still, you know, because they were small bones, you know? I run into things like that. And I'm hoping, you know, I don't have to go through that again, you know? That's all I got to say.
Hi. My name is Natalie Chavez, and I have lived in Bellingham for over a decade and have enjoyed raising my daughter here. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I had so much time that I jotted down a few notes. I encourage to request council members to watch a couple of documentaries before contemplating potential and final revisions to the comprehensive plan. First documentary is called March Point. It's a documentary with a few Swinimish youth that was completed in 2008. The Swinimish Tribe is a clamming, crabbing, and fishing community. March Point follows the youth's investigation into the impact of two oil refineries on their community and their environment. The two oil refineries were built in the late 1950s on land that was once part of the Swinimish tribal lands by treaty. The second documentary is called Poisoned Waters, a documentary that's a far-reaching investigation into the United States' great waterways that was aired on Frontline in 2009. Poisoned Waters examines water pollution in the United States and the new wave of pollutants entering our waterways and drinking water. There is also a portion in that documentary that explains how the water pollution has affected our orcas as well. I'd also encourage you to explore what Crestone, Colorado is doing. Crestone is a small and growing community in Colorado committed to making the planet a better place to live. They host an alternative energy and sustainability fair over Labor Day weekend. They've been doing it about 19 or 20 consecutive fairs they've had so far. The last one was hosted by Living Arts Systems, which is a renewable energy project development company. They also, in August 2015, had an energy fair which included the Collective BioDiesel Conference, which had participants and sponsors that included Omaha Biofuels Co-op and Castillo County Canola BioDiesel and Optimist Technologies and Aguadas and Greenstone Energy, among others. Crestone also has a school called Crestone Solar School, which has been a division of Colorado Sunworks, serving communities since 1974. Crestone also has companies producing products such as growing domes of Crestone, geodesic greenhouses, and geysa gardens. It's 2016. Let's move forward, not backwards. It's important that we think outside the box and for us not to be narrow-minded.
Thirty seconds, please.
What do we want Waukam County to be known for? Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Juliana Fisher. I'm a student up at Western, studying environmental policy, energy policy, and economics. I'm also the president of Students for Renewable Energy, and I'm interning with the city on energy efficiency and conservation. Ever since I began my education here, I fell in love with energy. It's really a magnificent thing. It has propelled our civilization into the quality of life we now enjoy, coal especially. But it has also created the largest global threat that we are now facing, climate change. In the past couple of years, Western has created the Institute for Energy Studies. I'm a part of this institute and a part of the next generation we keep hearing about. The motto on the front of the Energy Institute's informational pamphlet says, quote, "Educating the leaders for our clean and efficient energy future through interdisciplinary studies and research." My generation is not interested in working in the fossil fuel industry. This brand-new Energy Institute is not educating us about oil, coal, or gas. Myself, nor any of my fellow graduates, will be interested in the jobs at Cherry Point Industrial Area. That is not of the way of the future, and aren't we here to talk about the future? I encourage you to revisit the rules and regulations regarding renewable energy systems. This county needs to be, this county needs to attract this industry before becoming as antiquated as the industry we've heard so much about tonight. When I graduate in June, I will be searching for a job. I would love to find one in Bellingham, but chances are I won't. This county needs to ensure that the specialized and employable graduates of the Energy Institute can find work in Waukam County. This means implementing policies that are attractive to investors, prospectors, and industry players in the renewable energy sector. I would like to see, in addition to the comprehensive plan, to include streamlining and encouraging renewables here in Waukam. And not just solar, but all renewable energy resources that we have to utilize. Often, people talk about renewable energy technologies as some distant possibility. But I'm here to tell you, it is here, it is ready, and it's time. We can transition yesterday. We shouldn't lock ourselves into a dying energy industry and lock our local graduates out of a job in the communities that they love. Yes, we need to appreciate the industries at Cherry Point, as we need to appreciate coal for what it has done for our society. But as with blacksmiths, when automobiles became popular, we need to transition. And changes happen first and primarily at the local level. Let's be the change we wish to see in the world and uphold the requests of the Lummi Nation.
Hi. I'm Gabriel Westgreen, and I represent the hourly folks for Phillips 66. I'm the head of the union for the facility. Initially, I only came here to say that I support the comp plan as it is stated. But then, through all the other comments through the night, you know, something about being dirty and things like that, the very first day that I started working there eight years ago, they talked about environment. They talked about the regulations that we currently have to adhere to and the ones that are going to change in the future. They talked about our VOC compliance of the facility, which is volatile organic compounds, right? Our compliance for our entire facility is equivalent to having 20 Sharpies open in one room. That's pretty tight regulations when it comes to a dirty industry. And then, not to mention, I also happen to work in the sulfur plant, which is the environmental unit. We pull the H2S out of the fuels. We pull the sulfur out of the diesel, and we process it into a non-hazardous substance called sulfur. That sulfur is then used for fertilizer and many other things that's shipped elsewhere. It's considered a non-hazardous waste product. But with that, we emit very little. We have limits on what we're allowed to emit. If you make changes to the comp plan that will shut down the facility, it's going to be processed someplace else, and most likely in a country that doesn't have the regulations that we do, doesn't have the stringent rules we do. So all we ask is that you support the comp plan as it is written now. And other than that, I'd like to thank everybody that wore Phillips 66 red. That was very nice.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Margolis. I live at 5465 Potter Road in Van Zant, and I want to thank you for doing this this evening. What I want for the future is harmony amongst all of us and people to love each other. And I don't know how you're going to make that happen. I've been involved in the, been participating in the growth and development.
Get a little closer to the mic.
I want to thank you for what you're doing. And I've been involved in the growth and development as both a watcher and participant here in Waukam County for almost over 45 years. And I've even contributed to this comprehensive plan. I'm on Parks Commission, and I know it's very tedious. Just want to say to you, I think that you're the wisest collection of leaders that this county has had in my lifetime here in Waukam County. And I trust you folks to do the right thing, and I don't think that anyone would do a better job than you. And I'm really proud to see you folks sitting here, and I think we've done well to put you here. So thank you for your work.
Hugh Beatty. I've only been here 43 years. I'm as long as Jeff. But reading through the 11 chapters of the comp plan, I haven't read them all, but it started, I thought, why don't we have a chapter that deals with, just with energy? We have a utilities chapter, we have other chapters, but we should just have a chapter that talks energy. And so anyway, in the utilities chapter, which is chapter five, I hope you have your book with you, Barbara, right? In the chapter five, utilities, H2, talks about wind and solar. And then they go on to part H4, and there's no wind in that part when there should have been. They just talk about solar. So please make sure you keep the wind in the other plates, just because you don't like wind that much, Barbara, doesn't mean it has to be removed from the comp plan, for God's sake. All right? And I think, you know, we're talking an update, and we're talking new data and projections relevant for the next 20 years. We want to, we want to study the areas in this county that can do significant wind. We've got wind here, you know? We should use it. And we've got a lot of land that we could put things on that could be powered by wind. And we have a lot of rooftops that the county owns and other businesses own that could have solar. And there's lots of parking lots that could be covered with solar vaultages. In schools in particular, where the faculty drives their solar car, powered car, and plugs it in, you know? And we need, we've studied, you know, up in Glacier, now they have the battery up there that is testing out for when Glacier loses its power, they'll have something there, you know? Computer Power is putting that in. That's an experimental thing. But this kind of smart grid where we've got the wind, the solar, and the battery backup, that's what we need, and that's what will help a lot if there's ever a big earthquake or a Lahar or whatever, and I-5 gets cut off, we'll be in good shape, you know? So that's, that's my thing. Study your energy chapter, utility chapter. Don't be afraid to do your own little PUD, you know, if you get some power going.
Hi. My name's Cade Ray. I was on the list earlier and decided not to speak, but I'm back up. I think my brain's about to explode. I've heard a lot tonight. I've been studying environmental economics and demography in the back for my midterms tomorrow. But the biggest thing I hear is like, what's the compromise? Like, Waukam County needs to look forward to the future. Like, we need jobs. We need innovation. We need to keep the students around. You need growth. But at the same time, you have to respect the Lummi. You have to look at their traditions, what we signed, and their rights. And if we can expand in that area, I believe that there are right ways to do it. And that there should be a compromise. Like, the switch from fossil fuels to renewable energy is not just going to happen by pushing away fossil fuels and investing in renewable energies. There's got to be a transition, and no one's figured it out yet. And I would urge you guys to figure it out, that there's got to be some way that the fossil fuel industry invests into renewable energies and transitions out, because there are going to be a little bit of job loss if there is no Cherry Point. And there's gonna, that's going to have to be put somewhere else. And I think renewable energies is a future, like most people in this room, in the next 50 years, 20 years, 10 years. But how are we going to get there, and what's the compromise to get there? Because that's what you're ultimately figuring out. It's just, how are you going to get there? That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
So before I actually get into my official comments, I want to say that I worked very hard for a very long time to elect many of you, and for that, I apologize for having done that to you. So. My name is Matt Petrini. I grew up on Ridgway Drive in Bellingham. I'm a graduate of Seahom High School. Go Mariners! And I am also now the Clean Energy Program Manager at Resources for Sustainable Communities, which as of Friday afternoon represents 18,591 people in Waukam County who are our members. And I only have brief comments to make on their behalf because we have a lot of things, you know, it's been a long night and everything, and we're going to put, put a lot of it in writing. But we would like you to honor the requests of the Lummi Nation. It's not going to be an easy thing, and I wasn't going to speak to this tonight, but I realized halfway through this meeting that I owed it to you to go as far as you did with this hearing. And I also realize that, that almost to the day, this is the seventh generation since the treaty. And something is happening. Something is changing. This is a critical moment. And, and the decision that we make right now is really important. The world is waking up to the fact that we're facing what is irreversible climate change, and we, that we have to make different decisions in the future. We're realizing that. 200 countries signed an agreement realizing that. And so we're, things are, are changing, and we're going to have to be part of that change. We can't rely on a single plant to provide us jobs. Alcoa just taught us that lesson. Again, we need to figure out a more sustainable and more diverse economy that will last into the future, that will rely on energy sources of the future. And so that, that's really what I have to implore upon you. I also hope that we do what we can to manage our water and clean up our water, because it's a mess, that we do what we can to hold the line on urban growth, because we don't need any more sprawl in this county. We have room to accommodate people. We're doing it already. And, and that ultimately, we do what we can to make that transition happen. And so those are my official comments. But I also want to tell you a couple of personal, really brief things. There are two moments in my life that I am going to take to my grave.
Thirty seconds, please.
And one of them is June 10, 1999, here in Bellingham. As somebody growing up in Bellingham, I was in seventh grade at the time, a pipeline exploded, an oil pipeline from the BP facility, it's a gasoline pipeline, and it killed three children, Wade Hagan King, Stephen Chorvis, and Liam Wood. And I will remember that day until the day I die, because it was what convinced me that we cannot continue doing this. And the other moment was back in September of 2012, when the Lummi Nation burned a check, their check from SSA Marine at Cherry Point, and said, "The land is not for sale." And I hope that you all think about that and contemplate that as we go through the rest of this process, because it's going to be a complicated process. And you have a big job ahead of you. So thank you for doing it.
Thanks, ma'am. Thanks, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I couldn't let it end on some empty red shirts. Just a comment-
Say your name for the record, please.
Max Perry, Watcom County. I worked thirty years at Intalko and worked with a lot of young lummy men at that time, too. This was from sixty on through ninety-six. And worked with the Kinleys, worked with the Morris's and, and some other, some other fine lummy guys that worked. They knew how to work and they would work. Intalko wasn't always a clean unit starting out, but they became cleaner. We shut down every, every pot in that pot lines, in the three pot lines, seven hundred and two hundred and forty per line, three nine seven, B seven twenty, and put hoods on them, hooked them up to bag houses, put them in bag houses on it. It's one of the cleanest plants around in the United States today. It's, it's, you see anything else, you, you go back to Alcoa, Tennessee, or to Wenatchee, those don't stand, stand a candle to, to Alcoa or to Intalko. So, anyway, these people that are, that are looking, yeah, yeah, there's, there'll be changes coming over the years on it, but, but it's not there yet. And the jobs are there yet. So, I would just say that, look for the, for the industry at Cherry Point. Thank you.
Mike Senet, Bellingham. A lot of the talk tonight's been about jobs and a few weeks ago, I heard Tim Blue from the Lummy Nation speak about jobs. And in nineteen eighty-five, he said there were two thousand Lummys working in the fishing industry, harvesting over eighteen million pounds of salmon. And now, there's seven hundred and they've harvested, I think last year he said, over eight million pounds. So, when we talk about jobs, I'd like you to think about the jobs that they have lost and they hope to regain. He stated, Tim stated that he'd like to see those levels come back to nineteen eighty-five levels. That's going to take a lot of work cleaning up the water. And so, I'd like you to consider the lummy request to stop any future export of fossil fuels. And the biggest, I see the biggest danger to those refineries of loss of jobs is not the lummy request, but what the Republican Congress has just done in lifting the ban on fossil fuels, on crude oil. I thought we wanted energy independence in this country, but oil industry's puppets have taken that off the table. And Watcom County Council can protect us from those follies by banning the export of, of crude oil and other fossil fuels. Thank you. Thank you for all the, the work you're doing.
Carol Perry, Watcom County. You guys have been going on this since nine-thirty this morning and in all your committee meetings. And you must be sick of it. But, it is important and I want to encourage you and the people that are left here, this process has been going on for a couple of years. Rely on what your commission has done. Many times, they were here until after midnight on one issue, or two issues, or one resource, or one chapter. You guys don't have near the time that they had. They had lots of input from their constituents. Lot of emotional things were said here tonight. But I think of Ben Franklin at one point when our country was being formed. There was conflicting sides. In fact, everybody said, there were so many opinions about our country and how it was being formed. And they didn't know what they were going to do. And I could, if I were you, sitting here trying to absorb all this information and so forth, I hope you don't feel adequate for the job. Because you need some divine help. But it's bigger than you and, please rely on, I wanted to tell your, your assistant that there's been a lot of good work done. Rely on your committees, the Forest Advisory, they're an amazing group of people. They know a lot. You don't have to, remember, remember the slaughterhouse issue? There was hours and hours and hours of, of work done. And then when it came to you, it happened again, and this morning it was deja vu. Here it comes to council and you think you have to do the whole thing again. You've got lots of supporting work. Draw on it. Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, I'll just be, I'll just say, so Edward Dury, URY, for the record, I've been a resident of Bellingham and Watcom County here for five years. I hope to continue to live here in ten years, twenty years, thirty years from now, if it continues to be a, a place that is livable. So, I just have to speak to something, I know it's been said before and yet, just given the comments that keep coming, it just still begs clarification. And I know all of you on the council are well aware that it would be completely impossible to downgrade or destroy existing industries at Cherry Point through the comprehensive development plan for, or any kind of zoning, future zoning restrictions or development regulations for, for planning. There's, there is no possible way to eliminate the current oil refineries through anything that the Watcom County government could do. So, that was never, ever proposed or considered at any point. The only people that seem to have like ever brought this up or believe that are, you know, I don't, the Northwest Jobs Alliance. And I'm, I'm just disturbed that some of our friends who work at the refineries and, you know, belong to these, these unions, which, that you would be duped in believing this when it's actually not in your interest to be, you know, plant, it's, it's, there's, there's intentional misleading going on here. So, let's just clarify that. And by the same token, we can't save the industries at Cherry Point through these same regulations. And, planning to open the gates for any kind of industrial development anywhere at Cherry Point or anywhere in the county, whether it's exporting coal or crude oil, that also will not increase the job security for the existing refineries at Cherry Point. And the county government cannot protect those jobs. Those jobs will exist as long as their employers, you know, continue their business, can profitably market their product, which is refined petroleum. And as we know, demand for petroleum is on the decline in the United States and we can expect that trend will continue. There's no reason to think that oil is going to boom back up in the energy mix of the United States, especially in the next ten or twenty years. And there's no reason to think that in two thousand thirty-six, we are going to continue to be burning as much refined petroleum products as we are today. It's highly unlikely, in fact, it's delusional to think that would be the case. And I, I frankly hope very much that that is not the case. So, if we want to preserve, you know, these jobs are going to continue to exist, but at some point, they're going to shut down, because every industrial facility that has ever been built shuts down at some point. That's a fact. So, if we want to preserve jobs and moreover livelihoods and, you know, the continued, like a diversified economy-
Thirty seconds, please.
Not relying on one industry, we need to plan for that. And so, I think it would be entirely responsible to, and, you know, actually, yeah, responsible planning to, yeah, restrict certain industrial uses like exporting crude oil, which incidentally, you know, the ban on crude oil export was heavily opposed by the, the oil refinery workers, the United Steelworkers opposed this because they know it's a threat to their jobs and likewise, all these other things. So, you know, as we're going through this, I look forward to, you know, participating in this process through, you know, I, I do have a vested stake and, you know, wanting to continue to live here and would like to discuss other issues with you, but just wanted to clarify that for people. So, yeah, I'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, this is the last call. If you're not in line, you're, we're done. And I see no one, so we will close the public hearing. Now, I would really like to thank everybody for participating in a very awesome democratic process. You owe yourselves a hand for this one. We are going to keep the, the record open. I've talked with Mark from PDS, so we'll continue to take comments and we'll move on now in our agenda. Yeah, let's stand up and stretch. Okay, let's, let's come back to order and get, now we'll start our agenda. Okay, we have a open session. During open session, audience members will have to, up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Before beginning to comment, please state your name and topic of interest for the record. If your last name is more complicated than Smith or Jones, please spell it for the clerk and make sure to speak directly into the microphone. Please stand behind the signs located in the aisles as a courtesy to others and we thank you in advance for your cooperation. And, anyone who wishes to address the council may come forward.
Oh, okay, thank you. I just wanted to point out, and I don't know if Mr. Hutchings had made a declaration, but he is on the board of the Lummy Heritage Trust.
Who?
John Hutchings. And he's also, that should have been noted, and that's a conflict of interest.
He doesn't vote.
Well, it doesn't say that anywhere.
I'll say, I'll give you the email he sent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Karen Brown, Watcom County citizen.
Got an email, was it in our packet, the email from him?
No, we got an email today.
Okay. I'll have him send it again.
Okay, we have anyone else who wishes to speak in open session? Seeing none, we will close the open session. Consent agenda from finance.
Mr. Chair, the Watcom County Finance and Administrative Services Committee meeting met today and we discussed and voted on thirteen items. The thirteenth item is not in the original packet. It is a, an addition for the jail electrical for the facility out at Iron Gate. The vote on all thirteen items was three to zero and I s- Oh, my apologies. So, we voted, we voted on twelve items, items one through three and five through thirteen. These received a vote of three-zero and I so move, and we held item four in committee.
Okay, we have a motions for item one through three and five through thirteen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, we had an ordinance amending the two thousand sixteen Watcom County budget. Third request, this was, received a vote of three-zero and I so move.
Okay, it's been moved, the ordinance amending the two thousand sixteen county budget. Any discussion? May we have the roll call, please?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is, is no committee assignment. It's appointment of members to serve on the two thousand sixteen Watcom County Districting Committee.
I move approval.
Second, ma'am?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Well, just for the record, I should probably read those names.
Oh, I just-
They're not in there, huh?
Yeah, they are.
Mark Nelson, Brett Bonner.
Okay. It's for the Republican Party nominated Mark Nelson and Brett Bonner. The Democratic Party recommended Mike Estes and Lisa McShane. Those are the four people. They've been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And this is a confirmation of appointments to the executives, boards, and commissions for the year two thousand sixteen. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, as the at-large representative, I nominate all the people. The executive is put forward.
Second, ma'am.
Actually, it's not to, it's to confirm.
Okay, I can, well, I move to confirm all the people that the executive has put forward.
I'll second that.
Ms. Brenner?
And also, I don't think, it matters what district we're in for something like that. We're just, we're confirming.
I think you're right. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is introduction items.
I move approval of the introduction items.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for introduction. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. One introduction announcement, we will have a public hearing on February ninth to gather public comment on the draft two thousand sixteen comprehensive parks, recreation, and open space plan. And adoption will be scheduled for February twenty-third. Committee parts reports, natural resources.
Yeah, we had three items in committee this morning. The first was to elect the chair and I got elected chair, which is why I'm talking now. The second was a briefing from the Department of, State Department of Natural Resources regarding their recreation planning for Watcom County that they have just started on and should lead over the next couple of years to some better definition of, and hopefully some build-out of some new recreation opportunities on DNR land. And then we started our review of the comp plan, looking today at resource lands focused mainly on agriculture.
Thank you. Public works, health and safety.
We voted to make me chair again. That's the first item. And then committee discussion, oh, it's wonderful, this discussion regarding proposal to install a public use phone in Glacier. He stayed all night just so I could congratulate him and thank him, because it's a really, I mean, it's a wonderful proposal and it isn't going to cost the county much, and it is for public health and safety. And Tyler's going to get back to us in two weeks on how we can make it happen.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, and then we had a, sorry, briefing and discussion on Watcom County Comprehensive Plan Chapter Four, Public Facilities. That'll be a public facility.
Okay. Planning.
That's me again. We elected a chair, which was me, that's why I'm speaking. And the second thing is we had a, an update and review of the final draft of the two thousand sixteen comprehensive park recreation and open space plan. Mr. McFarland gave us an overview of that. We kind of ran out of time before we got to talk about it much, but we are going to have a public hearing, as you mentioned, at our February ninth meeting, and we'll either try to adopt it that evening or at the following meeting.
Thank you. Okay, any other items of business?
Finance.
You have, you have some more finance, okay?
Well, just, just on the finance, I just wanted to cover the item four.
Okay.
Was with, was, we received a very generous offer from Phillips Sixty-Six in terms of assisting with the soccer park. However, there's a, we wanted to give a little bit more time for the community to just review that, so that was held in committee. And the, I think there's a very interesting project going forward, item ten, which is to upgrade the software system for the permit processing, streamline our permit processing.
Okay, thanks.
And, and we elected the new chair, which was me, so.
Okay, other items of business. Okay, seeing none? Council member update, starting down with Mr. Weimer.
Nothing. I've been here for fifteen hours.
Me too. Yeah. Yes.
Nothing else to report.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
You know the only one.
I know, I know.
Nothing to report.
Nothing here?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Not tonight, anyway.
Not tonight, anything.
Okay, thank you to the council. Thanks for all who remain, the faithful out there. We are adjourned.